This meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor Jordy?
Here.
Supervisor Krosky?
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Here.
Chair McCowen?
Here. And I would like to invite Sharon Hildebrand to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and we will now have public expression. And we have Kelsey Rivera and Natasha Adams on Elder Independent Adult Awareness Month.
Good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board, CEO Angelo, County Council Elliott. My name is Kelsey Rivera. I am the Acting Deputy Director for Adult and Aging Services with Health and Human Services Agency. I'm here today to highlight June as Elder Independent Adult Awareness Month. Adult Protective Services of Mendocino County investigates an average of 75 reports of abuse each month. For every case of elder abuse reported, an estimated four cases go unreported. It is up to us as caring neighbors and community members to be a safeguard for the older adults and younger vulnerable adults who are incapable of protecting themselves. Some members of the community, including caregivers, healthcare providers, and many government employees, are required by law to report abuse. However, everyone should be encouraged to report whether they are mandated or not. We are on a statewide campaign to bring awareness to our entire community to know abuse and to report abuse. On June 15th, which is also World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, our staff will be coordinating with the Ukiah, Willets, and Fort Bragg Senior Centers to set up informational opportunities regarding available programs and resources for our community members. Once again, no abuse, report abuse. If you suspect a loved one, a neighbor, or anyone of being a victim of abuse, please contact Mendocino County Adult Protective Services at 463-7900. I have provided Carla with some stickers for you to share and wear, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Supervisor Brown?
Yes, and so nice to meet you and look forward to working with you on the area agency on aging.
Absolutely, Carrie.
And bring the proclamation, because I'm going to bring one we passed last month to the meeting, the upcoming one. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Natasha Adams. Good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board, CEO Angelo and County Council Elliott. My name is Natasha Adams. I am the Social Worker Supervisor for In-Home Supportive Services in Adult and Aging Services in the Ukiah Office. In-home supportive services serves 1,728 elder independent adult recipients. Our social workers and the recipients' providers are often the only support and contact our recipients receive. We reassess the needs of our recipients on a yearly basis and are often the first to recognize signs of abuse and neglect to our recipients. Our staff and providers are mandated to report any abuse and neglect to our Adult Protective Services program. Throughout my tenure, I've encountered a variety of situations while assessing the needs of the recipient. I have personally been involved in cases where there were issues of hoarding, self-neglect, caregiver neglect, lack of utilities, loss of housing, and financial abuse. Although we all would like to believe that these things don't happen where we live and work, they happen every day. We train all staff and providers to recognize signs and symptoms of abuse so we may stop the cycle of abuse as soon as possible. Elders and vulnerable adults are often isolated, fearful, ashamed, and reluctant to share if they are experiencing abuse. On March 2nd, 2011, Mickey Rooney testified before the Senate Special Committee on Aging about his own experiences stating, "For years, I suffered silently, unable to muster the courage to seek the help I knew I needed. I felt trapped, scared, used, and frustrated. And above all, when a man fills helplets, it's terrible, and I was helpless." His closing words were, "To those seniors and especially elderly veterans like myself, I want to tell you this: You are not alone, and you have nothing to be ashamed of. If we all stand strong together and speak up, we can begin to take the necessary steps to end the cycle of elder abuse." Once again, no abuse, report abuse. Call Adult Protective Services at 463-7900. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have three speaker cards on the Future Generations Fund, which was Agenda Item 6A on yesterday's agenda. And so, Roseanne Ibarra?
Do we have lights? Lights?
You can't point them.
No.
Thank you and good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board, CEO Angelo, County Council Elliott. My name is Roseanne Ibarra. I'm the Executive Director of First Five Mendocino. I just wanted to come to you this morning and follow up on some comments I heard following my presentation yesterday morning. The first issue was the public comment yesterday from the gentleman from SEIU who expressed his concerns about the county addressing critical needs for family children's services and then also for staff recruitment and retention. I followed up with your HHSA director, Tammy Moss Chandler, and she confirms that HHSA has the sufficient funding to address those issues. The other item was regarding the costs that the county is anticipating with the implementation with everything related to cannabis. And of course, we would, we would, we absolutely agree that the county needs to be able to cover those costs. And so, as you recall, yesterday, there was that, that, that was presented that for this coming fiscal year, for the county to, to, to make a commitment, but then in the following fiscal year, for '18, '19, to begin funding it at 10%, then 15% the following year, and that we do 20% by 2020. The, the third item was, you may have been left wondering, what are some of the programs that could possibly benefit from this fund? So I just wanted to give you an example of some of the stuff that, that we're working on right now, but that would need sustainable funding. So the, the first item would be the Good to Know Campaign. So I know that your community health outreach unit is exploring, starting, starting that campaign. It's a public awareness campaign that, that was started in Colorado. And what, what it would be is things on how to talk to your child about cannabis. What are some of the legal implications for a youth that, that uses before age 21? What would happen if they are charged with a minor in possession? So, so things along those lines. And then, the other item is our Family Resource Centers. I know you've been approached over three years now. There's, there's been an ask for sustainable funding for Family Resource Centers. So this fund could, could benefit the Family Resource Centers that are present in all of your districts. And so, so please keep that in mind and for the prevention programs that, that they fund, AOD, parenting support, that you're familiar with. And lastly, there is the Community Health Improvement Projects that we're working on as part of Healthy Mendocino. Those five areas that you'll recall, so housing, poverty, child, child obesity, family wellness, mental health, and childhood trauma. They're all coming up with very innovative ideas, and so they'll need money to fund those projects. So this fund could also benefit those, those projects as well. For example, for childhood trauma, there's the Champions Project that's in the planning stages, and so we'll need some funding to fund that as well. So I, and as you heard yesterday, with some of the comments, that taxpayers and growers support this, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Hildebrand, followed by Patrice Masolo.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you again. I am Sharon Hildebrand. I am the Director of the CASA Program, which is Court Appointed Special Advocates. I also am one of your Vice Chairists for Policy Council on Children and Youth. I also work with the State Office of Child Abuse Prevention on a regional basis with Lake Mendocino, Humboldt, and Del Norte Counties. So one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is how forward-thinking Mendocino County is. And when you approved the policy statement on marijuana and youth last August, I shared that policy statement with the rest of the state. As this is not going to be just a Mendocino problem, this is going to be a challenge that we all face with youth in understanding how to form policy on both a local and state basis. So I applaud you for leading the charge on supporting programs and then designating in that policy statement that you were going to be willing to allot certain local funds for prevention programs. Again, our Future Generations Fund recommendation is just that. It's meant to be prevention opportunities and then especially supporting geographically in each of your districts, a Family Resource Center where we can implement different programs, we can bring prevention opportunities through alcohol and other drugs, and then, as Roseanne mentioned, some of the specific programs. The state is facing a lot of unknown challenges now, and Mendocino has understood that putting a support behind prevention is a better dollar spent, and that's really what we're asking you to do. Our gentleman from SEIU yesterday was asking that you consider dollars from that fund and from those taxes going to a department that does intervention. We support interventions, but what we're asking for is let's prevent opportunities that come from the newest laws that are coming out. Let's help prevent trauma in children. Let's prevent long-term health ramifications because of brain development that is very well-written in the respect of, we want to make and let everybody know what opportunities exist in order to support our youth with the upcoming laws that are really an unknown. So you have set the pace, and I do further, and I want to let you know, I do share this with the state of how proactive you are trying to be in implementing policies and looking at dedicating local funds to these prevention programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patrice Masolo, and I am the Coordinator for the Healthy Mendocino website and also the Healthy Mendocino Project. Roseanne asked me to come and speak because one of the things that Healthy Mendocino did was they had a collaborative effort on the Community Health Needs Assessment, which included county, city, private sector, hospitals, nonprofits, that all came together to do this assessment to come up with, you know, what are the priority areas in our county that, you know, that we need to be working on? Two of those priorities, areas had to do with children, childhood trauma and childhood obesity and family wellness. The other three, poverty, mental health, and housing, have to do with children also because without those priority areas having, you know, some help, housing, you know, dealing with the mentally ill, dealing with, you know, poverty and all that entails, children are at risk. So if, you know, the funding for, you know, this fund coming from the tax, the marijuana tax, would be very helpful in, as Roseanne and Sharon said, prevention, to look at the needs of the children, trying to keep them away from substance abuse in their earlier years. There was just a, a new study that came out that talked about children under 17 and what it does to their brains when they're, you know, have substance abuse with marijuana and those kinds of things and how it affects them. If you look at the sheet that's being passed out right now, that's one of the indicators on the Healthy Mendocino site. It talks about teens who use marijuana, and they did a study on 11th graders who had been using marijuana. In Mendocino County, that rate is 27.4%, and that's higher than the California rate of 22%. But if you look at the trend down below, it's decreasing. We want to keep that trend going down so that, you know, we can say eventually we'll be at 22%, and eventually maybe we'll get down below, you know, 20 as far as the number of our children that are smoking marijuana. There's a lot of things out there with the marijuana, but the children doing anything that's going to affect their brains, and it is a mind-altering substance, it's going to affect everything, I mean, it just affects a lot of things. So your willingness to look at this tax and put these, this tax and this funding into different areas to help the whole county is, is very important. And of course, we're not talking about just the inland areas of the county. We're looking at the whole county, whether it's the North Coast, South Coast, Covelo, you know, Booneville area, Hopland, you know, the whole county is, is being affected, and these funds would help us county-wide. So thank you for listening to us.
A question, or see if, if I'm correct in what I'm thinking on this, but I believe there's actually studies that show that chronic use of marijuana by youth actually permanently impedes brain development. So it's not a temporary setback while you're using it, some of the effects are permanent.
Yes, that's correct. That's something that someone had sent me, a study of that, and I put it on the website, and so yes, you're correct. And not everyone, I don't think they think about it. Oh, it's just, you know, but it, it does have an effect on, on children later on in the years. It clouds the mind, and the cloud stays there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carol Mordhorst on the cannabis tax. And if it's related to the Future Generations Fund, please keep it brief because we're at a, hitting our 10 minutes, but...
So my name is Carol Mordhorst, and I am here to speak in favor of the Future Generations Fund. I just want to share with you that previous boards in the past had the opportunity to allocate tobacco settlement funds to this kind of effort. They successfully did it for many years, and it followed that Community Health Needs Assessment, that we were able to invest funds into priority areas that the community had decided on. And I would urge this board now, at this time, to take that same future-thinking step and invest in our children and for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public expression, and we will go to resume the public hearing for Item 5A from yesterday, continued to today, discussion and possible action to approve the Mendocino County proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18, including all recommended actions and adjustments. And the Executive Office, of course, is the sponsor. And CEO Angelo, do you have introductory remarks today?
Thank you, Chair McCowen. No, I would, I would like to go straight to Assistant CEO Flora, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board. So we're ready to move forward with the remainder of our department presentations. And so we have our museum director here for, for her part of that.
So we will invite Museum Director Glassy to address the board.
Good morning, and happy budget hearings. So the order in which I'm going to take the, oh, Allison Glassy, Director of the Mendocino County Museum. The three items on which we're supposed to speak, I'm going to start with major accomplishments of the past year, talk, talk about goals and challenges for the next year, and then focus on the budget. So the quote that keeps coming to mind for me when I think about last year, 2016, is from Dickens, "It was the best of times; it was the worst of times." And where that comes from is that, and I'll start with the best of times because I am an optimist. And the best of times is because last year, a longstanding issue dating from the turn of the last century, which is 2000, and that is a dysfunctional and unusable-for-is-purpose artifact storage building was addressed and in a rather thorough manner. And that is really good news. That's something that's been hanging over the head, I, that's the way I would look at it, of the county and the museum since the year 2000, when that building was actually first built. And its use since then has been affected by the fact that you can't put sensitive artifacts in it and you can't use it for its intended purpose. So that got addressed, and that is, in my view, the best of times. The worst of times is that in order to address that, the museum ended up being closed for almost half a year during the entire tourist season. And it was, as it was an unexpected closure, that means that there wasn't time to really prepare for it, and we had no idea when it was going to end. So the timeframes were uncertain, and it kind of started, and then we weren't sure how long it was going to go, and so we rode it out. And the first inkling that there was anything amiss was in March, so it actually dated much earlier than the closure happened, when we were discovering that there were a number of insects throughout the museum, and that's not what you want. We are not the only museum that has experienced that. The theory is that with the end of the drought and the more moist weather coming on, a number of museums did experience infestations. However, we were not well-prepared to deal with that because we don't have the proper storage. So after that, we called in an expert to look at things. From there, it was like, okay, and Howard, what about the mold issue? From there, it was doing mold samples, and from there it was, by the way, you're closed tomorrow. So that happened at the beginning of June. We actually did not open until the beginning of November. In fact, we opened on the same day that the bypass opened. So if you could pick, you know, bad timing, that was definitely it. After being closed, when we finally opened, nobody's coming down Main Street, or up Main Street. So during that worst of times, basically attendance dropped, there was no income from admission fees or sale, store sales or whatever, and no visibility. And that, that actually is the longest-term impact that I think we're going to need to deal with. Though museums are places of things, they rely on people to give them meaning and life. And I don't know how, how else to say it. We were lonely, you know? It's, it's like you're supposed to have people coming in, interacting with them, and sharing what you've got, and we were not able to do that. How did it affect what we were doing? Well, up until then, our inventory project, we had been going methodically, item by item, and we would log it in, document it, clean it, rehouse it, and put it away. And that took us through the entire, our entire collection of Native American artifacts. And I am so glad that we got all the way through that because they were not affected by any of the things that were going on here. One, we had already methodically for the last several years dealt with them, and we had put them in a place where, as sensitive artifacts, they could be stored safely. However, that wasn't true for the thousands of other artifacts that we have in the museum. And so we switched from dealing with item by item to more of a survey method. It was more, where are the insects coming from? Where are they going? And going through boxes and not necessarily dealing with them as we went through them, but assessing their condition. What we quickly discovered is that the textiles were all threatened and that they needed to be addressed. And so a lot of the work that was done over this, this last year had to do with surveying what we had, where we had it, assessing its condition, and looking for solutions for the textiles and leather in particular, and preparing them for that. We joked that we probably moved everything in storage at least once because every time they wanted to do mold remediation here, then we had to move this stuff out, and then they were someplace else, and we moved that stuff out, et cetera. We did decide to go slow on filling some of the positions because we weren't certain about the timeframes. We knew when we came out of it that we were going to need them, but at that moment in time, we were working with a very intrepid crew of volunteers moving things around. So the other things that we accomplished last year is we created the Second Shift Exhibit, which was ready to open then when the museum opened at, at the beginning of November. And we've been working on the Main Street Exhibit, where we have two volunteer guest curators, and that's been going, going on for well over years. So we've been working on a number of things, but what really affected last year, what we were able to do and what happened, was the remediation project. And just so you know, the remediation project didn't, wasn't completed until April 28th. So it actually extended into this year. But what happened this year was the focus on the artifact storage building. So we are now at the point at which we can see the ending, which is a fully functional artifact storage building. And I'll talk a little bit more about what it's going to take to, to finish that up. So the worst of times, the best of times, and then still we persisted. We just kept doggedly putting one foot in front of the other and kept going. So the goals and challenges for this next year are basically finishing utilize, and utilizing that, that artifact storage space as it was intended to. So that means basically moving everything, but moving it in an organized fashion, documenting as we go, and seeing how much we can get done. There's still a lot of conservation work that needs to be done, but it's stuff that we can do over a prolonged period of time, that we can do with volunteers and we can do with local staff. The, with board support, we were able to contract with Art Conservation de Régis to do a detailed, professional conservation on textiles and leather because those are the artifacts that were most threatened and that also cannot be handled in a timely manner or with the skills that we have local, have available locally. After focusing on the artifact storage, getting that all in order, we will focus on doing the, the other routine, if you will, preservation practices. And then we will focus on certain special collections. And the biggest one that we have to focus on is the Frolic Collection. And that is, I could explain all the significance of it, but I don't want to take more of your time unless you want. That is a huge thing. It has national significance, and we are at a very important crossroads in the life of that collection. And the Mendocino County Museum is the official repository for the Frolic Collection. So that's what we're facing for next year. So now I'll turn to the budget. Significant budget changes over the prior year. So with regard, the museum has one main budget, which is what I call the operations budget. It's Budget Unit 7110. In fiscal year 2016-17, salary savings, primarily from the unfilled second curator position, were used to fund about 44% of the Conservation Treatment Services contract. So it did not require, at that time, additional funding to be placed in the museum's budget. We were able to redirect that funding. In the fiscal year 2017-18 budget, which is the one in front of you now, the remaining 54% of the Conservation Treatment Services contract is included in the budget, but only one curator is budgeted for this next year. So you could say the salary savings, in a way, is being taken upfront. That certainly is a reasonable approach to this. This is a, the contract is a very expensive contract, and it is a one-time-only contract. It will be done at the end of this year. It would be great to at least end the year appropriately staffed with, with the two curator positions, especially since the progressive completion of the Conservation Treatment will require skilled reception on our end when it comes back to us, handling and ongoing care once the, the textiles and leather artifacts are, in fact, shipped back to us. But it's understood that filling regular positions is a lengthy process, and the conservation contract is expensive. So that, that is the budget. That's the explanation of the approach for this year. Including the carryover from fiscal year 2016-17 from the museum's budget, the Conservation Treatment contract is fully funded through 2017 and '18, and it will be completed by the end of the year. So the entire contract is $170,000. Some of it is budgeted in 2017- Some of it is budgeted in 2016-17, and the remainder is budgeted in 2017-18. So, whatever hasn't been spent in 2016-17 needs to join the rest of it in 2017-18 to cover the entire cost. So, hopefully that's clear. Then I was also asked, and I can go into more detail, but, you know, what I would say is, the museum operations budget is pretty straightforward. It's staff, and it's utilities, and it's conservation costs, and basically...
And I was actually going to suggest a little less detail.
Okay. Okay, well then, I'm at the right level. So then, I've also been asked to address Budget Unit 7112, which is the museum's special projects budget. And the executive office, in last year's budget process, determined that this budget unit should be closed, and the earned income that goes into it, the admission fees and the store sales, et cetera, be transferred to the nonprofit that was taking on responsibility for museum projects, exhibits, events, and educational programs. And the plan was that that be done as of July 1, 2016. I would point out that this decision was made by all of us prior to the finding of mold and the subsequent sudden closure of the museum from the beginning of June through the beginning of November. So, during that time, obviously, and starting actually in the previous fiscal year, attendance, admission fees, and retail sales all dropped. And the drop began in June, continued through the end of 2016. One payment from the previous year was posted to the projects budget in this fiscal year, after July 1, and a comparable amount of income was deposited to offset it. But until the final fiscal year closeout in September, the shortfall wasn't evident. And that's when it did become evident. I noticed it in reviewing the budget units in Munus, and I was the one who brought it to the attention of the auditors' office, and then the executive office. In the meantime, however, the nonprofit MMCP had accepted the program responsibilities as of July 1, and then subsequently discovered that the earned income intended to fund them was basically fumes. So, when this shortfall was discussed a couple months ago, the executive office indicated that the county general fund was not going to be made available to address the shortfall. The expectation was that the nonprofit should pay for the shortfall, I believe that was the expectation, either by foregoing the slight income it was getting, or to do additional fundraising to pay it off. I had expressed concern last summer and fall about the loss of attendance and income during the closure, but was told that insurance could not cover the cost, and that nothing could be done. We also weren't sure of the timeframe, so at that point, no one knew it was going to last the entire tourist season. Given the historical conglomeration of admission fees, store sales, and event tickets, it's hard to estimate the actual amount of loss, and so I'll be really clear about that. There's no, you know, figure that's easy to pluck out. A conservative estimate would be that it's somewhere in the range of $10,000, and it could be, you know, twice as much. I'm not going to claim any particular amount, but that our attendance is two to three times higher during the summer, obviously, than it is at other times. At the same time, the museum wasn't able to hold any events at that point, so there weren't any other sources of funds coming in. My hunch is that had any of us known that the museum was going to be closed, et cetera, that we might have delayed the transfer. That would have made sense, and determined ahead of time how to deal with any shortfall. But it was all in motion by the time the closure happened, and so it's one of those things where you just kind of keep going and figure that somehow it's going to work out. The nonprofit barely scraped by, things were delayed, reduced, cut, and it will probably take until 2019 for them to build sufficient reserves to address cash flow issues. That's a common issue for nonprofits, and we know that, and so they, the nonprofit is going into it. It doesn't seek any assistance from the county, despite shouldering the most public face of the museum, which is its exhibits, events, and programming that are built on its collections. So, the question remains, how to zero out Budget Unit 7112, and doing it now? The options that are available would be to backfill the shortfall by transferring funds from the museum operations budget, which has sufficient salary savings to cover that amount, and the amount we're talking about is around $6,700, as well as the remainder of the conservation contract. Another option is to insist that the nonprofit forego the earned income it receives until the shortfall is paid off, or to raise funds in some other fashion. Or, and this is a solution that was selected by the museum advisory board, to allocate funds from the museum's endowment fund, which currently stands at around $13,600. This solution was presented to the museum advisory board and received full support of its members. The museum endowment fund, the funds in that originated from the special projects budget. It is made up of admission fees and store sales, et cetera. So, and it has never been an actual endowment fund from its inception. The board resolution that created it specifically says that donations to the fund and income derived from the investment of same shall be restricted in their use to those special projects and/or activities which have been identified by the museum director and the museum advisory committee or board as being appropriate for funding. So, the museum advisory board followed the process that it has followed in the past, and designated that $6,700 of those funds go towards zeroing out the special projects budget unit in the county. I learned about all this last night, which was too late for me to address the situation upfront, or to consult with the museum advisory board, that the CEO and the auditors have determined that since this is using endowment principle, the request should first be approved by the board's supervisors. So, I guess the auditor is being asked to reverse the action that he had already taken based on the actual policy and past practice.
So, we have a question, Supervisor Brown?
I was gonna let Ms. Glassy continue and finish, but we're receiving information here that, you know, we're going to have to digest and get further information, at least for me. I can't do that standing here, and I'm hearing a long saga, so, you know, I'm concerned.
Well, I'm hearing a lot of things that concern me, so the museum endowment fund was created. It may never have realized its potential. It may ultimately never have been used for the purposes for which it was intended in any meaningful way. That's actually one reason the nonprofit was created, supposedly, was to hopefully inspire more people to make donations, knowing that they would only be to support the museum. There'd be an independent body making those decisions. Now, somewhere along the way, and I get the language of the resolution adopted in 1985, 30 years before the nonprofit existed, I kind of think that the resolution in 1985, giving authority to the museum advisory board to approve disbursement of funds for particular projects or activities, was solely intended to support projects and activities being conducted by the museum, not some outside agency that didn't exist at that time. And the apparent redirection of the minuscule income that the museum receives is another concern to me. The nonprofit was supposed to be supporting the museum, not further taking away general fund money from it. So, I have a lot of concerns the way this appears to have been rolled out, and the, some of these activities that are being taken, I believe, could only be authorized by the museum board of...
Trustees.
Which is the board of supervisors. So...
The...
And I don't know, this can all be sorted out today.
That's my point.
But, you know, there's several areas of concern here.
Okay, well, as I said, this was brought to my attention last night, that I was expected to address this this morning, and so that's what I'm doing.
Well, possibly because you didn't address it before.
Um...
I'll do, so anyway, wherever you want to go with that.
Okay. Well, I would like to finish that. In terms of the museum endowment fund, there's no restriction on where the funds go, but in any case, the $6,700 to zero out the project budget unit is not going to MMCP. It is going directly into the project budget unit to zero it out, and presumably those are, not presumably, those are the remnants of whatever activities were conducted prior to MMCP, taking responsibility for them. So, from that standpoint, it is a logical use of returning funds to the budget unit from which they came in the first place to zero that out. The second amount, which is being for designated projects, there, in my view, isn't any restriction on where, who would do those projects and where it would be directed, but if that's a restriction that the board chooses to place on it, you know, you certainly have a right to do that. And then we could do those projects through the museum budget and complete them that way. So, to just summarize where we're at, following a procedure that has been used before, the museum advisory board authorized two dispersments, $6,700 to zero out the leftover in the project budget unit from 2015-16, and they authorized $6,800 to go towards several projects. I would identify two specific projects that are highly needed. One is to replace the sign that used to be on Main Street pointing people towards the museum that collapsed two years ago, and we haven't been able to replace it. And the other is for improvements and conservation activities on the hippie van. The mold remediation focused only on mold. They did do a HEPA vacuum cleaning of it, however, there are still insect issues. And so, those would be the two projects, then in my view, as museum director, those funds would be most appropriately used. It could certainly be run through the museum budget, though it doesn't have to go to MMCP. And so, the issue that the CEO was referring to you for was the use of principal, as well as interest. As I indicated, and what the resolution says, there isn't any distinction made between those things, but board approval is always desirable, and so, you know, I would ask your support of these actions, and if you wish to redirect the project funds to the museum operations budget, you certainly could, or we could leave that issue for the future. My biggest concern is zeroing out the special projects budget unit based on a shortfall from the previous fiscal year, so that we can move on and not have that hanging over anybody's head. If you're not interested in using these funds, then, as I said, an alternative is to use some of the salary savings from the museum's operational budget. That is clearly general fund money, taxpayer money, et cetera, so that may or may not be something you want to use. Or, you can send a bill to MMCP to pay off something in a prior fiscal year for which they had no responsibility. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but I'll just finish here with, you are the museum board of trustees, and I wanted to, prior to this other issue coming up, I did want to ask for your assistance in two areas. One is getting Caltrans to put signs in advance of both exits to Willets that list both the Mendocino County Museum and the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. This is absolutely critical. The city of Willis has advocated for it. I've called them. Chamber of Commerce has listed it. We've had veterans do it. We need those signs. With people not going down Main Street necessarily, the only way they're going to know that there is a county museum there and a veterans memorial is if there are those signs, and they're usually the brownish signs. So, I would ask for assistance, not money, but assistance in making those things happen. The second is that the county has budgeted the follow-up to what I'll call the Great Remediation, and it's critical that we maintain timeframes and complete the remaining tasks in the next few months. The timeframes are dictated by the projected return of the first batch of the specially treated textiles. They have to be immediately stored in an enclosed space within the artifact storage building on proper shelving at a specific temperature and humidity. And the estimate is that they will return in August or September. The conservation facility is unable to provide long-term storage, for obvious reasons, and we need to be ready to take them in, and to preserve them in the clean state that we're getting them back. There's no other place within the museum that they can be stored to sustain the conservation treatment that they've undergone. So, just to run through real quickly, the specific actions that are needed to get to that point are placement of storage containers for large outdoor and/or quarantine artifacts, as well as non-artifacts, such as folding tables, the proscene art from the museum, et cetera. And this will allow us to clear out about a third of the artifact storage building right now, so we have room for actual artifacts and archives. And this includes relocating the Coleman Ranch tack room, which is in pieces in the enclosed space where we intend to put the textiles. So, that actually has already been budgeted for, just needs to be done. The second is weatherproofing and vermin-proofing the museum to support the environmental controls and the pest management program, and the overall cleanliness that we need to safely store and display artifacts. It's not uncommon to find lizards and even snakes in the museum, in our main building, and unsealed entries allow all manner of insects to join us, and uninsulated windows and doors compromise HVAC systems. So, that's the second piece of it. And then the third piece is installation of proper environmental controls to keep the artifact and archive storage facility at a constant and narrow range of temperature and humidity in order to safely store sensitive artifacts, such as our entire textile collection, Native American baskets, and non-lethic saddles, maps, books, et cetera. This is the bottom line in artifact and archive storage. Not only do proper temperature and humidity preserve materials and reduce stress on items, on stored items, they also help to control for infestations and mold. So, once that's done, we can take it from there. Storage, organization, labeling, ongoing routine, conservation, maintenance, et cetera, once we have the space and our curator staff, we can do what all museums must do, which is take the best possible care of the legacy objects that have been entrusted to us. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Supervisor Kroski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for all your work you do at the museum. We certainly appreciate it, and I realize last year was definitely difficult with the decrease, and now with the bypass, so, you know, I think you make a great point that we do need signage. I know that's been a constant battle in Willets, signage not just for the museum, for everything.
Yes.
You know, but I would like to sponsor an item for the 20th meeting, you know, to work on the requested signage for the museum.
Okay. That would be greatly appreciated, and the sign that I'm talking about actually listed other organizations as well, so it wouldn't just help us.
Yeah, there's a number of cultural, there's kind of a cultural row on East Commercial there. So, we do have a request for an agenda item for improved signage for the museum, sponsored by Supervisor Kroski, and she could work with the museum director in City of Willets, probably.
Yes.
And potentially that... And potentially, that could be a consent calendar item. Supervisor Brown?
Yes. During this time, I believe I remember, City of Willets gives $1,000 a year for the museum.
And they own the property on which?
The building stand.
Yeah.
Have they stepped up at all during this remediation period? Or have you requested maybe funding to help with the preservation?
At this point in time, we haven't asked them specifically for that.
Because they get the main benefit of where it's located in the county.
Yes. I don't think we should underestimate the value of the land. They do provide some support. They've moved chips over around the veterans memorial. They've helped with some landscaping issues, and they've also helped with some lighting issues on the outside. And I have met with the city manager, prepared a list, and suggested that possibly we brainstorm different ways in which the city can support the museum being there. And she accepted the list. And, you know, it was a very broad list. But, for example, the water is provided by the city. So, it would be theoretically possible for the city to cover the water bill. I'm not saying they will. I'm just saying that was one of the things we talked about. Or possibly looking at some grants that would allow for replacement of the restroom facilities or those sorts of things. You know, I also know that Willis is going through a period of uncertainty and difficulty. So, I'm sure they're trying to figure out what they're doing as well.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I mean, obviously, we're like 20 minutes over on this item already. And I think there's still some issues that are unresolved. I noticed that there are several items in our list of capital improvements that have to do with the museum, including the storage trailer and gallery lighting improvements. It seems like there's some other ones that perhaps need to be included in the CIP, having to do with some of these other storage facilities for the textiles and the leathers and so on.
It's my understanding that they may already be included, but under the larger rubric of HVAC system issues and delayed maintenance.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'd like to figure out is what specifically having to do with these budget hearings do we need to do today? And is it basically having to do with 7112 and basically ratifying, because we are the trustees, ratifying the actions of the museum advisory board with respect to the two allocations of roughly, you know, $6,000, $6,700 and $6,800?
Correct. Correct. Everything else, as I understand it, is covered in the budget.
Okay. And so, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I kind of think we do, in the interest of the time, I notice we don't even have any breaks in there.
Well, I would-
We kind of have, you know, a steady schedule. Those are the things I think we need to do.
Sure. Understood. But I'd like to hear a response from staff on these items, because maybe I'm missing something, but it looks like we're effectively zeroing out the museum endowment fund and dedicating all future museum revenue to the nonprofit, which is kind of the opposite of what the original purpose of the nonprofit was, as I understood it. Assistant CEO Flora?
Excuse me. Yes, Chair McCown. Perhaps Auditor Weir wants to address that. But there were a couple of clarifications that I wanted to make first. So, the revenue loss related to the remediation project, I believe Director Glassy said that none of that was, you know, will be recouped by the museum. However, what has been documented by the museum and submitted to our insurance will be reimbursed. It's not a large amount, but, you know, some of that revenue losses will be partially covered. And then, the understanding of the executive office and the auditor controller, based on our discussions during the budget conferences, is that the overage came from expenses related to an event that was sponsored by the museum and/or the nonprofit. But then the revenue, if any, generated from that event, went to the nonprofit. So, you know, that's sort of the issue. And, you know, I mean, we do need to have some direction, because essentially, if no direction is given at this point, the general fund would be covering that loss at the end of the year when the auditor closes out the book. So, I don't know if there's anything else.
Well, a loss created apparently by the diversion of funds to the nonprofit. So, rather than the nonprofit supporting the museum, the county general fund is supporting the nonprofit. That's really, to me, the opposite of what was intended seven years ago when we authorized the nonprofit, which then only was created, you know, about a year ago. Director Glassy?
Yes. The shortfall in the projects budget unit has nothing to do with the nonprofit. It was, it occurred during the previous fiscal year.
May I ask, were funds used from the endowment fund to fund the event put on by the nonprofit? Because that's what we're being told.
The shortfall-
I'm asking, were funds taken from the museum endowment fund to sponsor a fundraiser put on by the nonprofit?
No.
Chair McCown, if I could clarify. I apologize if I said the endowment funds were used for the event. Our understanding from Director Glassy was that the special projects budget unit funds were used for that event.
Okay.
And then, and then the special projects fund was not reimbursed for that expense?
Yes. The, the way I would explain that particular shortfall, having looked at the whole scope of what happened in 2015-16, is that we were counting on income from the mushroom wine and beer train that-
Well, the issue to me, and I hate to belabor it, but funds were taken from the special projects fund to pay for an event put on by the nonprofit.
No. No. In 2015-16, the nonprofit did not put on events until July 1, which is when they took on essentially the special projects that had been funded through that budget unit and the income associated with it, which has always been designated for special projects. When the decision was made to transfer as of July 1, the responsibility for special projects and that enclose the special projects budget unit as of July 1, it was done with the knowledge that those income sources, admission fees, store, retail, et cetera, were going to the nonprofit to, along with the responsibility now, to fund exhibits, events, and educational programs. So, when we do a field trip, the costs of that come out of the nonprofit. They are not paid for by the county. The specific fundraiser, if you will, that we can blame part of the shortfall on, the remainder being cash flow and then going into not having funds generated to be able to pay it off, the shortfall is in the previous fiscal year before the nonprofit took responsibility. And the fundraiser that evaporated on us was the mushroom wine and beer train when we found out late, in late summer, long after the budget had been approved, that the tunnel had collapsed, that it was not going to be fixed, and that the train couldn't occur. We had to, we did not have that event. That is the one true fundraiser the county, the museum has had. It did not occur, and it left a major hole. We tried to deal with it, but obviously, that plus-
Supervisor Brown?
-the loss of income got us in that situation.
Well, I was just going to say that I'm still playing with this and have questions. And I don't think we can resolve this particular item, financial item, at the moment. But I would like to ask the CEO, when can we, does this have to, because I'm not, I need to digest all this and figure it out. And I'm just wondering if we can bypass this particular point at this time?
Chair McCown, Supervisor Brown, there has to be a decision on the $6,500 before June 20, because that's, that would be the hole in the budget at this point in time. I believe that, I agree with what you're saying as far as, I think there is a lot of issues that need clarification. And the direction the board wanted with the nonprofit, I think that it would be good for Ms. Glassy to have that discussion with the board. I'm not certain of the direction of the nonprofit as compared to the direction the board wanted. We have to have a decision on the $6,500 today. Is that right, Lloyd? Other than that, we could have another agenda item before this board for additional clarification on all the issues up to and including when the special projects budget unit was closed and moved over. That account now is a special account outside of the county, under the nonprofit. The board has no control over that. And we don't have any knowledge of what's in there. That's, so I think that there's some things that need to be discussed.
It was actually moved out of the oversight of the auditor.
Lloyd?
So, yes, the change was that this budget unit would go away, and all the activities would be on the nonprofit side. So, the problem exists that that fund is now in the hole, and we need to address it before year end, if it's going to, if it's going to come from general fund, which we have not prepared for yet. So, that's the issue before us. If it's coming from an outside source, as it has in the past, I mean, this budget unit was always supported by donations and fundraising and no general fund. So, if it's going to continue to operate that way, we were expecting something from either the nonprofit or a fundraising event or something to cover this. Never happened. We're coming to the end of the line now. We have to have, we have to have this covered before I close the books this year. So.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually have a remark on something other than this one small issue. So, I don't know if you want to finish this before. I just had a question. So, we have in the capital improvement, so we have a storage trailer. And I just wanted a little more information what was going to be in there, because it seems that a lot of the stuff that's in the current archives has to do with the kinetic carnival. And I just wasn't sure, is that a museum-sponsored event? Is that something that's cosponsored with the city of Willets? I just wasn't sure about that, because is that what's, a lot of that is going to be in the storage trailer?
Certainly, some of it would be, but it's not the majority of it. I would say the major items that would be in there would be the Ben Arthur Cabin, which is an artifact that has been basically out in the weather for years and needs definitely to be brought in. But it needs to be quarantined. We can't bring it into the sensitive artifact storage. The other would be the Tac Room.
Okay. And as far as the kinetic carnival stuff, again, is that a, is that a museum-sponsored event?
Originally, it was directly sponsored by the museum. And if and when it's resumed, it would be resumed by MMCP, the nonprofit.
Okay. But we're currently storing all of the equipment for it?
Yes. And the museum roadshow. But it would also, it's also, we have folding chairs and tables and other things that we need for museum events, and they're stored in there as well.
So, it's ridiculous on one level that we're spending this amount of time discussing $6,000. But I do think there are some fundamental issues here. And maybe the board of trustees authorized certain things a year or more ago that I don't remember. But I don't remember redirecting income from admissions and sales to the nonprofit. Maybe the board of trustees did that.
That was part of the adoption of last year's budget when the budget unit was actually closed out. That was the whole intention behind doing that.
So, I would need some research from staff to confirm that. But what I believe the board ought to do today is ratify item one in the letter from the museum advisory board to make that transfer, to close out that account. And frankly, I would appreciate a little further discussion by the board of trustees at another time before we act on the second item, which, as the museum director says, those funds don't need to be directed to the museum community partners. They could simply be handled through the museum budget, to the degree they're appropriate, which I don't disagree that they are. But I think we have to have some clearer lines between what's done by the museum, what's done by the community partners. But, and, you know, I don't know if what I'm saying resonates with the board, but if it does, I would appreciate a motion to approve the dispersment and actions in item one in the letter.
So, move.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Hamburg, and we will vote on that motion. So, we're taking a rather formal action here as a tiny part of the budget.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to further discussion of all these items.
Thank you. And did anyone have further questions regarding any of the museum budget presentation?
No. But when we have the follow-up discussion, maybe there could be just some clarity that, I'm sure you could easily answer, which is if the revenues from the bookstore and all that are going to the nonprofit, is the nonprofit providing the staffing for the bookstore and the reception? So, I mean, that may or may not be something you guys have already discussed or considered, but I'm just curious if that might be a direction that the greeters at the museum, at the Fort Bragg Museum, which does not have the same hours, much reduced, at the Guest House Museum, they're volunteer docents. But there's potentially more foot traffic with the county museum in Willets than the Guest House Museum. And so perhaps part of this rethinking of the model there might be that the nonprofit is providing staffing rather than county employees to staff the museum greeters, rather than, say, the archivists, seems to be the responsibility of the county.
Okay. We will, to be continued.
Chair McCown, if I could just have one clarification. So, the June 20 item will be a consent calendar item from Supervisor Kroski regarding the signage. But we will have another item after that, most likely in early July, that will discuss the museum, the nonprofit, the direction of this board, and any other items that have come out of today's discussion. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And Supervisor Kroski will work with City of Willets and the museum director on the signage issue.
Okay. Thanks. I actually have a whole signage plan so that we can start the discussion with that.
Great. Thank you. So, with that, we will go to the library.
Hello, Karen Horner, the county library director. I'm going to make this short and sweet.
Welcome.
So, I'm sure you guys want to move forward. This first year was my first full year as the library director, and I think it was a very successful year for the library. We've had a lot of positive events and programs. We've been able to, we're almost fully staffed, and just the overall morale of staff has greatly improved. So, it's been a positive year. We've had lots of accomplishments, almost too many to name. So, I'll briefly just go over some real fast for you. We did acquire two new branch librarians for the Fort Bragg branch and the Willets branch. And I think they're great additions to our county. We've also changed two of our previous library associates in Round Valley and on the coast to branch librarians, which they greatly deserve. And those are definitely seen as branches now, which I know the community appreciates. And we've also acquired two new children's librarian, again, just amazing additions to the staff and what they do. We've also been able to reclassify one of our staff members, Barbara Chapman, who has been, is just an amazing addition and does stuff behind the scenes that cannot, anybody else can do. And so, it was nice to be able to give her that recognition and allow her to have a better earned title. And some of our great things that we're doing countywide, we have seed libraries in all of our branches and the Bookmobile, which I would go on record saying, I'm pretty sure we're the only county in the nation that has that distinction, which is a great plus for us. And our- And our seed library program is just gonna keep growing. And all the branches do events and have speakers, and it's, um, getting lots of recognition kind of in the, um, gardening and agricultural world, that we are doing this. Um, our Facebook and social media use is extremely popular and it keeps growing and brings a lot of people, attention to our libraries. Um, we also offer the thousand books for kindergarten throughout all of our branches and the Bookmobile, and it's a great nationwide literacy program that we offer. And each branch puts their unique spin on it and does programs, um, so it's a big deal. Um, we've also, of course, we've received lots of grants. One of our grants we received this year was at the Fort Bragg Branch. It was a book to action grant, which would help promote the seed library there. Um, we've also just, our programming continues to increase at all the branches. And, um, I wanna say they're more than doubled, what we even did last year, which was a lot. Um, throughout, you know, each of the branches, it's almost too numerous to talk about, but each branch does an amazing job of bringing something interesting, different, and unique to their community. I, you know, wanna, sometimes the coast and Round Valley gets kind of, they're quiet because they're so remote, but they are, do an amazing job of their community. I know in Round Valley, um, one of the, the branch librarian came up with a breakfast club program that allows teens to come and come on Saturdays, get behind the scenes work, learn about how the library works, do volunteer hours, read stories to kids, and then it gives them a chance to just, um, earn their hours through the high school program, or if they decide they wanna eventually maybe take that career path, it's just a great offer for the teens in Round Valley that don't have a lot of options. Um, we have increased the amount of databases that we offer on our website. I know the county has a brand new website, which is amazing. And so, um, I've had staff members working behind the scenes that have just made the library part even better than it was last year. We've doubled what we offer database-wise for the public. Um, so we have access for like ancestry.com. People can come to the library to access that for free and, and look up things through ancestry.com. Our, um, ebooks through the Overdrive that uses just increased. Our hoopla where people can movies and books and CDs and everything free. And that has just tripled in the amount of what we offer. Um, our collection has increased and it's been better, and we're more up to speed with having what's new and popular ready when it hits the streets. So, um, that's been a huge plus to the, the community. Um, all of our branches do amazing outreach. We've done countywide outreach. Um, Fort Bragg, we, we're in charge of the Kitty Parade at the Paul Bunyan days now. The library oversees that. We were at the Pumpkin Festival in Ukiah. Um, we go out to all the schools, local events. The coast hits the, um, they do the health, community health, um, outreach through, through the coast. Um, we were at the Mendocino College Career Fair. And, um, we were also part of the countywide health fair, which we'll also do again this year. So, we'll be, we set up booths for that. So, our goal is just to keep increasing that kind of outreach throughout the community. Um, we also do participate in the Nano Rymo, which is a nationwide, um, you write a novel in a month program. So, we do that. Our main, the main, um, access for doing that is through the Fort Bragg Branch, that they've kinda taken on. And they just recently had about sixty kids participate in that Nano Rymo. And all their books, the friends pay for them to be actually made, so, and the books are on the shelf at the library, so they can be checked out. So, it's a, uh, really awesome thing for the kids to do. Um, we also partnered with the museum, and we offered the Bill of Rights. A three D model was set up at, at the branches for people to enjoy during the month of February. And, um, we also just recently coordinate with, um, the back to land movement here in the museum and the Story Center of Berkeley and the California Center for Book. And we had a storytelling workshop at Willets, where people could come and actually have their, their Mendocino County life story recorded, and it's gonna be archived and stuff like that. So, we actually did that. Um, and then we've had an all staff day, which was amazing. Um, CEO Carmine came and spoke, which the staff really appreciated. We had a representative from the Sheriff's Department there and about safety. And, um, we also had a representative from First Five there and spoke. So, the staff was greatly enjoyed that and was great for morale. Um, probably our biggest thing that we did this year, we offered a new book festival at Willets, which was kind of a, a big, um, big task that was taken on. And we had it open for, um, three hours on a Sunday in Willets. We had, um, about five hundred, four hundred items checked out in a relative short amount of time. We had just stacks of new books, new CDs, knew everything that was popular that people could come and just get right away with having to get a request list or purchase. Um, so it was a great benefit to the community. We had music and all sorts of fun raffle stuff, so. And our goal is to do that again, again in the fall and to take it over to the coast, over probably in Fort Bragg. And our goal is to do one twice a year, just do it twice a year at each of the branches. So, we even hope to hit like Round Valley and the coast too. Um, so, um, yeah, overall, it's been a great year for the library. And the goals for this coming year is just to keep doing what we're doing. Um, we're working with the same, um, website company that the county's done, and we'll actually have our own sub-site. And so, um, which will be, I think, a huge resource. We'll actually be able to do more online through that website. And, um, just keep marketing the library and, um, keep doing what we're doing. And then the challenges, um, probably for us, the biggest challenge at the library is just staffing. We're just, we do so much that we just don't ever seem to have enough staff. But, um, so of course, in this new budget, we've actually put in for, um, for new positions to cover the amount of work that we do and just to relieve some of the burden on the staff now that are really overworked and they're feeling it. And, um, of course, a big challenge for the library, as for any public library, is just we have to deal with a lot of, um, mental health issues that come into and see us. And it's, it's increased dramatically in this year. And we've had lots of major issues happen in the Ukiah Branch, the Fort Bragg, and the Round Valley Branch dealing with. We actually had a staff person that was physically hit in the library. And we've also had some other issues and, cause the library is the all-inclusive, welcoming, safe space, so we get to everybody. And it's the biggest challenge for the staff. Um, so, yes.
Thank, thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Chairman McCowen, and I just, um, wanted to, um, remind you, did you, I was looking for my paperwork from your last meeting in Covelo.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, there was a special award that one of our assistant librarians received. Did you share that with the board?
Oh, no, I didn't. I was thinking more of what happened last year, cause this is kinda gonna be happening this year. But basically, um, our library is getting lots of recognition. The county library is getting lots of recognition in the national library world. So, um, quite a few of our staff's proposals and presentations have been recognized. And, um, we're having staff do, um, proposal and presentations at the, um, Association of Rural and Small Libraries in Utah in September. We have staff members presenting, um, on our seed libraries. And then we also, um, our children's librarian from Ukiah was at a recent, was at a previous conference and, um, spoke with them about what she does, what our county does. And they were so impressed that they invited her and gave her a scholarship to, um, go to Spain to be a part of, uh, Spanish Book Festival to represent our county there. And then, um, we also have another library technician who, um, a proposal and presentation at the, a ga, a National Gaming Conference for what we do at the library. Um, so, yes, lots of, um, we're getting lots of awareness of what we, what we do in here at the county level on our libraries.
I just had to let you down your chest about all the wonderful staff you have.
Great, we have a great staff. Yeah, that's our biggest asset, is just the amazing staff and what they come up with and what they do.
Thank you Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you Chairman. Uh, my question is also about coming in the future. I was just wondering if you can give us an update on the Leightonville Library?
Leightonville, yes. Um, I'm a one hundred percent supportive of there being a library in Leightonville. I think it's needed and wanna, and, um, being kind of the northernest town in our county, uh, it's, would be a great benefit to the people in Leightonville, Leggett, Piercey, and all of that. Um, so, I'm in constant conversations with, um, the Friends of the Long Valley Library. And, um, we actually will be, hopefully this month, visiting Humboldt County, cause they actually have a small library that is similar to the direction that the Friends are thinking. So, we were gonna go there and tour it and see how they, how it's set up. Um, I know that, um, the Friends are working hard. They have the book sale room on Fridays, and they're raising funds. And the, I wanna say the goal is for them to, um, somehow acquire the use of a piece of property or, um, to be able to provide some sort of like a portable unit that's ADA compliant, meets all the standards. Or they've actually looked at even different properties. And then once they can get that space, um, then, um, I think, you know, we've talked that the library will definitely be able to be there.
I think the model, uh,
Thank you.
The coast community library, the Covelo library, the community basically did the fundraising to acquire a facility, and then once they had that, the library was able to move in and then we're responsible for the operations and.
Yes, definitely. And I think, um, I think they see that as the, the right way. The quickest and most efficient way to get it done is to go that process, definitely. And then, um, in terms of, yeah, providing the library there, um, the county library budget is able to do that. No problem. And that would actually be a satellite. We've discussed that and talked about it. And that would actually be not a sat, would be a satellite, not a branch. And a satellite is the difference between a satellite bridge is the size of the space, the amount of books there, um, the amount of hours opened and the staff. And so that way, there would be a satellite there that would be more, um, economically feasible for us to do, but also give all the services there at Leightonville.
So, that'd be related, you know, you mentioned possibly a portable. So, the size kind of on one level dictates whether it's a branch or a.
And then the hours and staffing and, and things like that. Mm-hmm. And then just of course, a portable, you're not gonna have the space for large-scale programs, but it's still quality enough where you can, you know, have story time and some little small type of programs where, I mean, you can still have public computers and still have all the materials there for people. And so, it would definitely meet all the needs. And then, of course, future expansion for the Friends is always an option later down the road, but this would be the quickest way to get that service to Leightonville.
Supervisor Jertie?
Yeah, just briefly, so, um, I, I think the board is very supportive of the direction you've taken in the library, and I think we're all very happy with the outcomes. Um, at, just the issue you've brought up about the mental health issues that are popping up at, at several of the libraries. Um, yeah, if there are any suggestions that you could come forward with, um, that could be addressed, um, you know, not necessarily by library staff, but by mental health employees, um, you know, please let us know, because, you know, I think we're, we're looking at improved mental health services and, and really problems, those problems should not reside in our county libraries.
Yeah, it's, I mean, of course, you know, most of our staff thought they were gonna come and work at the library. It's nice. It's the library. It's fun. It's easygoing. Um, and even as, you know, librarians with their master's degree, you, they don't teach you that at library school. You know, when you have, um, somebody that's, you know, either high on drugs or mentally challenged, you know, ill, that's coming in there and, um, with knives or yelling and cussing, I mean, those things are just huge disturbance. And we deal with that probably weekly, daily, that's happening in our libraries. Um, so, it's a major issue. I mean, we have a strong behavior policy that the board approved. And so, a big part of us is just making sure we, we enforce it. The Sheriff's Department and the Police Department and the city, I mean, they're just, they tell us, they call, they call us. As soon as you just, something even just makes you feel uncomfortable, just call us. And they're right there. Um, so, the, really the solution, we can't stop them. It's just, it's the library. Um, but we have thought about perhaps maybe it would be beneficial at, like especially the Ukiah Branch to have somebody there once in a while who is trained or could be some sort of that
Outreach.
Social service type of assistance that can somehow maybe assist it, provide some sort of a direction for someone who needs it, or provide some sort of assistance there. That makes a little easier sense. Um, yeah, we do definitely see a large population that maybe doesn't feel as safe going to other county departments, but comes to the library. And maybe having a representative there that can provide assistance would be a benefit.
Well, uh, several things. One, and I think you referenced it, the libraries do have behavior policies. And it is, in my world, it is reasonable to insist on minimal standards of appropriate behavior. And even people who, uh, you know, have a variety of issues generally approach the right way. They can conform their behavior to that standard. The idea of having someone available, you know, I, I don't see, uh, someone sitting around the library waiting for the person to come in. But ideally, um, Fort Bragg, Willets, Ukiah, we do have staff. The county does have staff. Potentially, there could be someone on call. Uh, so the first call might not be to the police, depending on the level of disruption, the first call might be to an outreach worker. Uh, and that's something that, um, ideally, our HHSA, uh, director could, um, put some thought to. And, you know, so a graduated response, you know, if, cause obviously, these folks, you know, on a lot of levels need help. And, you know, we had part of the discussion yesterday about enhanced outreach and the need to go out to where the people are, rather than expect them to come to us, so.
And the people are at the library. So, yes. No, and I actually have spoke, um, with, um, Tammy Moss Chandler, the director, and, and talked about that issue. And it's just one of those things where I think it's just, we're all so busy and staffs kind of stretched thin, that it's just coordinating and trying to work together to come up with a, a solution of how we can kind of, kind of relieve the tension at the library and provide some assistance, yeah.
But, yeah, I also totally agree with, you know, the first priority is keeping our, our staff and our patrons safe. So, uh, you should never hesitate to make a call to someone to try and address those issues immediately, instead of thinking it's gonna get better on its own. Uh, and I'll second Supervisor Jertie. I think we all believe you've been doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
And you've mentioned, uh, the stress on your staff of being so busy. Well, that's because the libraries are doing so many things and hosting so many events.
Definitely, that's, it's a plus. It's a plus type of busy. So, yes. And it's, um, it's a very good staff. That's very creative. So, it's, yeah. And I think, but I do, and I do think just adding a couple more full-time staff would help. Help us just keep increasing it and also relieve some of the, um, the feeling of stress on the staff to have to try and do it all.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding the library?
Chair, Chairman McCowen, before you move on, I just wanted to make one point that, um, the previous meeting, when you had a presentation from the library advisory board, it was their recommendation and was directed by this board to include some type of contingency amount in the library's budget for unanticipated, uh, capital projects. And so, uh, the way we handle normal capital projects is just a transfer from the library that's budgeted to the CIP budget unit. We increased that amount by $50,000 for unanticipated projects. So, I just wanted the board to know that based on the direction you gave, um, that was included in this year's budget.
Right, in a slightly different way than they had requested, but it's, the effect is the same.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just wanted to, um, give them some goodies here for everybody. Um, we're trying to do more marketing for our library, cause I think the library, it makes the county look good. If there's a really quality library that everybody's aware of, it makes people wanna come and live here. It's part of what's the lifestyle. So, we're trying to do more marketing. We're gonna create posters. I'm passing this. Take them if you want. It's just pins and stickers and lanyards that we're gonna start doing more outreach and offering more goodies. So, I'll leave it here.
Thank you. And I have a request for a break, so we'll take a, uh, brief break and then reconvene with the Farm Advisor. Just reconvening after a break, and we'll go straight to the Farm Advisor.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I'm Glenn McGordy. I'm acting county director, as well as the Wine Growing and Plant Science Advisor for UC Cooperative Extension, also known as the Farm Advisors Office locally. And we also run the 4H Program, the Master Gardener Program, and the California Naturalist Program. So, I'm here, uh, mostly just to answer questions if there are any, but, uh, I would mention there'll be a couple staff changes this year. Uh, Greg Juisty has put in his thirty-three years, which is the average tenure of Farm Advisors here in Mendocino County. This is a really good gig, and we stay here a long time. So, I'll be looking, my thirtieth year this September, and all I can say is gone by quick, is Carrie and I met the first week I was here, and it's amazing. And we will be getting a, uh, a new cross-county position, which will be a dairy advisor. And, uh, I was having a brief discussion with Supervisor Kroski about that. And we're gonna see if there's also dairy goats in that job description, because while we do have some cows down in the south coast. And we're going to see if there's also dairy goats in that job description because while we do have some cows down in the south coast, there are also a lot of dairy goats around and, and hopefully we'll have somebody to answer your questions on that specifically in milk production. So as far as our budget changes go this year, we're requesting to upgrade one of our positions a little bit, which is our agricultural technician. We want to move Ryan Kiefer from, to senior ag tech because he's been with us for four years and his skill set has just grown enormously. We're very, very dependent on him. We really run him ragged through our experimental season, which runs usually from about the first of March until October. So we're looking for a slight increase in the salary. And the other important thing that we need to do is replace our pickup truck. We've had it since 2001. And we've been very careful with it, but it's falling apart literally, and, and we rely on it to carry things like wine grapes to the winery for experiments and things like that. So it's kind of becoming a safety issue as well as a reliability issue. Other than that, our, our net county costs will be about the same. We've stayed on budget this year. And we'll be also seeing maybe a slight increase in travel for our cross-county assignment people. Having a food systems advisor from Marin County, who also comes up and works with our local, local food effort as, as well as the new cross-county dairy advisor. Now, I guess the big question would be replacement of Greg Juisty. Well, we can't replace Greg Juisty. He's one of a kind. And I think they broke the mold, thank God, after he disfarmed. But nonetheless, we will be getting advertising and hopefully recruiting a new person to replace Greg as the forestry and wildlands ecology advisor. They will be covering in addition to Mendocino and Lake. They'll also be covering Sonoma County forestry as well. Not that it's really a huge change in what Greg does already because Greg has pretty much covered any softwood forestry issues in, in Sonoma County. So he does actually occasionally work on, as just a, kind of a convenience basis for Sonoma County Cooperative Extension as well. As far as things that we're doing, well, we're doing the usual, just trying to answer some questions for our producers and keep our 4H program going and Cal Naturalists. We're basically in the business of doing applied research and serving as kind of a link between the researchers of the world and our local growers to do problem solving. And in addition to that, we carry on applied research programs here ourselves. So for myself, the, there's been two big issues that worked on this past year. One is trying to find biological control for an invasive pest called the Virginia creeper leafhopper, which attacks vines, and we're doing very good. We found a parasitoid of that insect that attacks the eggs, making it unnecessary to spray for its control. And that's been a, a pretty intensive effort with UC Berkeley assisting us greatly along with grant funding from Department of Pesticide Regulation. So far, we've probably spent close to $300,000 or $400,000 in grants to get that done. The other thing that I'm working on is trying to find a way to do frost protection without water or wind machines, which we're making some good progress on. I'm working with Dr. Steve Lindahl from UC Berkeley. And if we, we've discovered that a lot of what causes freezing is ice nucleation by bacteria. When these bacteria are present, it catalyzes the formation of frost. And if we can suppress those bacteria, we can actually supercool the plant by about two and a half degrees. So that's almost as effective as a wind machine, and it just involves putting copper sprays on about four or five times during the spring when frost is likely to happen. So that would be really great if we could do that without wind machines and water because that would take care of a lot of some of the, or take care of some of the environmental problems and issues that we have with vineyards in the county. So that's kind of my very short presentation. I'm not sure, I think I will be acting county director for a while, but with UC.
Again?
Again, yes. I've done one other stint between 1994 and 1997. I'm not sure. I haven't heard anything directly from our management. So when they make up their mind, I will know more. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I do have a question of Assistant CEO Flora. The two issues highlighted by Mr. McGordy are those addressed in the budget?
Yes, both are recommended for, for funding in the budget.
I thought so, so thank you. So those are taken care of. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair McCowen, and, and I'm really proud of Mr. Kiefer and want to see that promotion for him. And he is family historically in this area for generations. But he was a young man that began in 4H.
Gee, I couldn't have guessed.
And came back and, and just, I'm, I'm really excited hearing that news.
My first image of him was sitting on his dad's shoulders when he was about a year old with these bright rosy cheeks and red hair.
Just exactly. And I would also like to share with everyone that the 100th anniversary of both the Farm Bureau and the Farm Advisors' Office is coming up. And I think it's 2018, and this is a big deal. It was the Board of Supervisors that really created the action to have the Farm Advisors' Office, which, you know, is, we can all celebrate. It sure brought a lot of science from the universities out to the people throughout California. And I'm excited about this 100th anniversary.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions or comments, thank you very much.
Well, I just have one comment. I, I want to thank you for your service. I, I know this can't be an easy job for what you do. My, my unofficial motto for Mendocino County is question authority, and, and you're it. And I know that it's been a very difficult year in a lot of ways for some of the things you've had to take on. And I really appreciate having sat on Ucaia Unified School Board as a trustee, the amount of time and effort that goes into this, and you're not compensated nearly enough for what you have to put up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So now we will move to our general government departments, beginning with the auditor controller. And we might try and catch up a little on time here. I think, I believe these budget units are pretty straightforward, so if we could each just hit the highlights and, thank you.
Thanks, Chair, Chair McCowen, board members, Lloyd Weir, auditor controller. I haven't prepared anything formal, and the major changes in my budget units, we, we've basically gone over already. So I, I, I won't get, dive into that. We are a service department and we will be again this, this year, you know, of course, stepping up and providing all the services we have in the past. The major changes, we've already discussed in budget unit 1000, of course, the two major ones are the new cannabis revenue, which is now showing, and the increase in A87 due to the billing for HHSA. In my 1940 miscellaneous budget, the major change there was we moved the public safety sales tax for the fire protection into that budget unit this year, and we'll be dispersing those payments out of there. Other than that, everything is running normally and just take any questions if you have anything.
Questions of the auditor controller, Weir? Supervisor Hamburg, did you have?
Nope.
Anything? Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Next on the schedule is assessor clerk recorder.
Chair McCowen. So if you want to get back on track, both the assessor clerk recorder and treasurer tax collector have indicated that they were not available today. And the treasurer tax collector, also the assistant, Ms. Forster is also not here. So unless there's any questions you have on their specific budget units, Otter, Weir, or myself can try and address those. Otherwise, we could move on to county council.
And again, I believe those budget units are pretty straightforward and we do have the information. So not aware of any issues, supervisors. So thank you. That would bring us to county council.
Thank you, Chair McCowen. Supervisors, Catherine Elliott with county council. Since 2012, county council's been in what I would describe as a state of impermanence and transition. I have only one staff member in my office that served under Janine Nadel, who's now Judge Nadel. Starting in March of 2016, when this board appointed me as county council, with the help and support of this board, our office has been completely reorganized at this time. We are starting this fiscal year, being able to dedicate one full-time attorney and a half, a staff member directly to code enforcement, and that is relying on some of the cannabis income. With the help and support from HHSA, we've been able to dedicate and fund two and a half full-time attorneys for CPS while continuing to provide a full-time attorney to HHSA overall. Rebecca Chenoweth, just la- just last month, took a job with Sacramento. But I'm very excited to announce that Shannon Cox, who has served for 10 years with the District Attorney's Office and is somebody who is known to many of the social workers over in CPS, is going to be joining our office July 17. Our offices, that will mean at that time, our office will be fully staffed. We have been working hard to tackle the backlog that was inevitable from that amount of turnover. For example, between 2008 and 2012, we opened 18 more lawsuits than we closed. From 2013 to 2015, we opened 21 more lawsuits than we closed. This means we are currently carrying 30 more lawsuits overall since 2008. Before we were able to be fully staffed, my goal was really to get on top of those lawsuits and try and, you know, if you, if you don't take care of your lawsuits, you will be looking at some major fees. And so I wanted to get on top of those. Therefore, we've had to rely on outside counsel to assist us. And we've had two major cases, one involving the lawsuit with Joan Turner and also the ALDF lawsuit that were matters that were already pending and have taken, that reflect in our outside attorney costs. However, I'm happy to say that in 2016, we were actually able to close four more lawsuits than we opened. And I'm hoping to continue that trend. Also, since we have been fully up to staff from August of 2016, we have continued to keep all matters, all lawsuits that have been filed in our office, and we're continuing that trend. I have been reviewing what other county councils have done in this regard, and most county councils' offices in the state handle at the most 50% of the litigation in-house. Many of them don't handle any litigation in-house. That was confirmed by a survey in 2015. And I took my own informal survey at the last county council meeting, and that appears to continue. As you heard from the various law enforcement agencies that have presented their budgets in front of you, one of the challenges is the various realignment laws that have taken place and basically have created a local prison population. What that means for our office is that we have had far more jailhouse writs than we have ever had. And I'm happy to report that we have successfully defeated all of those. It also, of course, means more lawsuits. So this is just to try and have you understand how our caseload has increased. Between the lawsuits, the Public Records Act's request, and all of the other work that we're doing and what we're, what work we're doing and will continue to do to support and move forward the cannabis program, my office, I would say, they are all very, working very hard. But in spite of that load, I have had a great many departments express their gratitude and their confidence in our office. Now we are, now that we are fully staffed and organized, I look forward to being better able to serve this board and this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Supervisor Jurety?
Well, just to state the obvious, I mean, if, if there's a, a large number of cases that are coming from people who previously were in state prisons but are now in county jails, is there any kind of strategy that Mendocino County or any other county is deploying to try to reduce the, the likelihood of those lawsuits? I mean, maybe just they know how to, they know how to harass the jailer by filing a lawsuit. I don't know.
The answer to that question is yes. We have been, one of the things that we brought back since I've been here is our litigation meetings. And in fact, we're coming up on our one with the, we do these quarterly and we're coming up on the one with the sheriff's office soon. In those litigation meetings, we talk about what litigation we have pending. And we also work, have been working on direct policies of where we can better effectuate and stop some of those lawsuits from coming forward by changing policies. I would say the sheriff's office has been exceptional in terms of working with our attorney, Brian Alatkin, and our, and our whole office in terms of trying to bring new policies forward. And we have addressed many of the problems that we've seen from those lawsuits. So that is, as we staff up, one of the things I'm trying to do is get in front of the problems so that we're not having to answer them in the lawsuit, basically.
And I believe that's part of the intention behind approving the second lieutenant for the jail as well. Have overall better supervision and better policies and adherence to those policies. And that, I think, will be a preventative measure. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair McCowen and county council. I just wanted to make you aware of a piece of legislation, AB 1250. And it does address contracting out by local government. Special districts, I think, may be included as well. But it appears to be a bill that would disallow the contracting out by counties to have services such as an outside law firm. I did go talk to our assembly member Wood about it. It has moved on to the Senate. I'm going to get an update on whatever the amendments were made. And he told me that he has gotten some promises about amendments to the bill. So I don't know where we're at, but I see it as very harmful, especially to small and rural counties. Many times I'm, you just look, the counties, at least the ones I talked to through the Rural Counties Association, they do a lot of contracting out because they are so small, have such small budgets. And they, it's the only way you can do many of these services. And it's also important to note that some of these services, you don't need full-time staff. It's maybe one or two days a week where several counties contract out. So I think this is really important. I will try to get that update on AB 1250, find out where we are. But if, I, if I feel we need to weigh in on this at the Senate level, I'm sure going to bring something forward.
Thank you. So potentially, we could have a, a letter for June 20th. And you'll work with staff, of course, if you want to bring that forward.
And just to reply to that, I, I do know that the County Council's Association is also looking at that. Jennifer Henning, which is our executive director, also advises CSAC. And then, of course, we've had the great addition of Arthur Wiley, now as the attorney for RC. RC. And he is specifically there to address those things, specifically the concerns with rural counties.
And actually, both our associations, the Rural Counties and CSAC, are very much on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Hamburg?
Kid, I just want to, want to mention something you and I talk about from time to time, which is the difficulty in getting opinions from the Attorney General. I know there was one opinion we requested, it's been, been at least back in December, that we still haven't received. There's another one that I think dates back to, I don't know, is it February? That, is that the gun club one?
I believe it dates back to 2014.
Oh, well.
It does. It goes that far.
Okay. And, and, and you told me that, that is finally going to be released. And I'm just, just wondering, is there any light at the end of this tunnel? Is this because the, the, that office is just. Is this because the, the, that office has just really stopped functioning in any kind of a responsible way? Or should we stop asking the Attorney General for opinions because they just never seem to come to fruition?
So in answer to your question, I just spoke with Mark Nolan, who is the attorney that's addressing the gun club. That, he still predicts it is going to be the first opinion issued by the Attorney General's Office. It was, I believe, completed at least by December. When I, when I came on as county council, that one had started before me, and so I reactivated that one so we could get an opinion. I think with the turnover, they just are not getting the sign off from the sort of top brass, and as we know, there's been turnover there. I have just received a call back from Catherine Bedart. Haven't had a chance to speak with her, but she is moving forward on the Measure V question. And so as, as soon as I'm finished with the board meetings, I should be able to get back to her tomorrow. But she did remind me that this is a lengthy process. Lengthy should not mean what we're going through with the gun club opinions, so. And I am also aware that the County Council's Association, who has assisted before with the Attorney Generals to try and move some of these forward, they are also reactivating, and Jennifer Henning, the executive director, now has somebody assisting her. So I'm asking for them to sort of assist with this as well, so we can move it forward.
And this is something that is true throughout the state?
Throughout the state. As I said, this is, you know, there are other county councils right now that have opinions pending, certainly other city councils. There are, you can look at quite, quite a list. So this is unusual to have everything so far behind. So I'm hoping once they start coming forward, that we'll get many of those opinions to come forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Any comments from staff? Thank you. So that brings us to Human Resources.
Good morning. Heidi Dunham, Human Resources Director for the county. Good morning, Chair McCowen, members of the board, CEO Angelo and County Council Elliot. I have prepared a PowerPoint, but we'll just use the handouts if you want to go ahead and give those out. I want to talk a little bit about our budget numbers. Budget unit number 4025, our wellness budget. We had an increase in that budget unit due to an increase in contract cost for, for our employee participation numbers have gone up. Budget unit 0715 is our health insurance budget. We did have an increase in that based on projections for claims. Our Kenan Associates is very conservative when they project numbers. This is not in our PowerPoint yet. So, so we had that increase, so we're usually well under the projections. Budget unit 1320, our HR budget unit, we had a large increase in our 1,000 series, and I know Assistant CEO Flora talked about that. That's mainly due to the employees transferring over from the HHSA budget unit. So now we'll go to the, to the handout. I want to go over some of our accomplishments over the last year. We implemented the countywide training program. We offered 24 classes over the last year.
By the way, we are caught up on time, so you could actually slow.
I thought you wanted me to hurry, so. Okay, okay. I'll slow down a little bit. Okay, so our countywide training program. Over the past year, we were able to offer 24 classes to our county employees, and some of those classes were Microsoft Word and Microsoft Excel. We had some communication skills training, business writing, public speaking, and then a class directed at supervisory skills for first-line supervisors. We've added some employee benefits, including air ambulance coverage for employees who are participating in the health plan. We have a new program called Plush Care, which is basically online doctor visits, and many staff in our office have used it. In fact, Mendocino County is the largest user in Northern California, and the county employees pay a $10 copay for the service as opposed to paying what they would have to pay to go to a regular doctor. You usually can make an appointment within an hour of deciding you want to have an appointment. I've used it, it's great. It's wonderful. I did it on my cellphone and actually talked to a doctor on FaceTime. We also added the MERC program, the Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan, and that is a program for county employees who are eligible for coverage, say on a spouse's plan. We reimburse them for premiums and copays up to a certain amount, and it saves the county money, and it also saves the employee money. We've created an internal human resources training team. We train on human resources activities like submitting staffing requests, and we held our, they held their first training, my line staff held their first training last month and had 26 attendees from various departments to get caught up on the processes in HR, and they plan on continuing those little workshops to bring new, new staff and refresh people who've been here for a while in the processes. We completed six classification studies. We're on number three, slide number three now. Six classification studies for various departments. We conducted 344 recruitments. That included screening 5,556 applications. We conducted 344 employment exams and prepared 368 certification lists. We also processed 707 staffing requests, 175 promotions, 229 new hires, 216 terminations, 18 employee transfers, and 130 special request forms. The next slide, number four. Activities and services provided to HHSA. Over the past year, we think that we've improved the timelines by eliminating the staff resources unit and replacing it with HR because we eliminated that middleman. We're right there on site. It doesn't have to be submitted to one unit and then come over to HR.
So even though employees were transferred to HR, they're still located at HHSA?
They're still located. Yes, that's correct. We, we have ongoing meetings with agency staff to better understand their needs and address their issues in timely manner. We've customized some reports for them on staffing, such as vacancies by unit, and we work with them to see, Tammy and Ann, to see what they would, would like from us and try to come up with useful reports for them. Employees, we have onsite access, onsite assistance with employee matters for administration. Instead of them having to call over here or come over here if they have an issue such as a discipline matter or an employee has a grievance issue, we're right there on site and accessible. We've heard from employees, agency employees, that they're more willing to bring their questions and issues to, to HR. They feel like there's more confidentiality coming directly to HR, and, and they get their answers that they need. We attend agency meetings, staff meetings, to provide information and updates and gather input from staff regarding HR activities. We've identified and assisted in identifying and eliminating duplicative and outdated agency internal processes related to HR, things that needed four steps just to get to HR. We've eliminated three of those four steps because they were only internal processes. They had nothing to do with county, county procedures. We have improved coordination with risk management and the workers' comp programs. There's better communication between HR and the risk management and workers' comp unit, sharing information and staying up to date on cases that are current. And on slide number five, the leadership initiative. We have done a lot of work there this past year. We've actually convened the Mendocino County Leadership, Executive Leadership Team, also known as MCelt. We've developed a team charter in that unit, and MCelt has identified and established seven work groups, which will include 70 county employees at all levels. And the seven work groups are communication, economic growth and development, performance plans, metrics, recruitment and retention, customer service, employee engagement, and operational processes. We've also brought Tony Gardner back in, and he has done HPO training for 100 employees at all levels. And we brought in futurist Mary Deveraux, and she did a presentation for 110 of our county staff. The next slide is our comprehensive new employee orientation, which I'm really proud of. Prior to kicking this off in January, we had a four-hour employee orientation that was just, you know, hit the, hit the main points, get them in the door, get them out the door, and employees described it as feeling like they'd been hit by a truck. So we convened a work group with 19 employee representatives from different departments and talked about what we needed, what information we needed to share, and we developed the two-day program. The program includes a 30-minute, 30-minute presentation by the union first thing in the morning. There's a welcome by one of the board members, and I know, I think three of you have done that so far, so we'll be talking to you about that, which is really great for the new employees to hear from the board members.
And one missed her second opportunity.
That's okay, that happens. We're going to think about doing a video. We also have CEO Angelo come in and welcome the new employees and talk about the administration, the CEO's office, county code, those type of things, and leadership. Then I come in and do a presentation on public service and the importance of being a public servant. We also have presentations from the auditor, retirement, Office of Emergency Services, benefits, safety, workers' comp, and EAP and wellness. During the two days, employees are able to complete their, their six or seven, depending on their classification, mandatory training units that they were, used to be handed a list as they went out the door and said, do this within six months, and 99% of the time, it didn't get done because you go to work, you're working. You're not thinking about those things that you were supposed to get done in the first six months because you're doing your job. Their forms are completed by the time the two days are over. We don't have to go chasing forms anymore. Nobody misses deadlines. And Information Services does a presentation there. Prior to the employees arriving at orientation, they are already set up in the county system. They're able to sit at a laptop that we provide and actually are shown, walked through, logging into the county system, accessing their email, and how to access the county training site. So it's great. Plus, there's camaraderie between the group, you know, they, now they know other people who work for the county, and they've been hanging out with them for a couple of days, so they have people that they can contact. And then, I'll talk about our goals for the upcoming fiscal year. Recruitment, we're going to focus on developing an ad campaign that focuses on benefits, and I know we've talked about this before, and, and also the concept of a career instead of just getting a job. We want to increase the use of social media for job openings. We're working with, we're waiting to talk with Sarah in the executive office about using Facebook and having a regular job featured once a week, and then just a general advertisement once a week. We're going to increase our targeted recruitments by contacting colleges, attending more job fairs, and professional organizations. HR and department, we want to do HR and department reviews of job announcements and flyers to better attract qualified applicants, using industry trends, updated language, and better clarity of job functions and qualification requirements. Something that we just did was, we had an operations specialist positioned for environmental health, and that was the position that does all the hazmat work. And nowhere in the title did it say hazmat anywhere. We had three unsuccessful recruitments. We went back to the flyer and we added the hazmat into the title, and now we were, we were right in the middle of closing a very successful recruitment, just by having those words. When people do a search for job openings, they found that hazmat job that they were looking for. So hopefully, we'll be able to fill that very soon, and we want to do the same thing with some of the other jobs. Next slide is, we want to focus on retention, obviously. We're going to be looking at turnover rates. Instead of looking at them quarterly or annually, we're going to start looking at them monthly. We're going to start looking for hotspots for turnover, look for trends, and then actually do like a mini investigation and find out why there's so much turnover in that particular unit. Is it something that we can help with or change? We're going to review current classification and compensation plan and identify industry trends and standards. We're already in the middle of that study, looking at other counties and what they use for their class and comp plan. We'll continue to review and update classification specifications to ensure they're current and accurate as requested by departments. We'll improve our oversight of the county's leave tracking system. We're looking at, we're looking at purchasing some leave tracking software where we can actually have better coordination of tracking all types of leave, including FML, workers' comp, and all of the different protected leaves that are out there. And it's important for us to track them because sometimes you're, if you're not in a paid status, you are responsible for paying your own insurance premium, and we need to track those to make sure that we can provide those notices in a timely manner, better than we have been. Successfully negotiate labor agreements with eight bargaining units. As you know, yesterday, we had one that was adopted, and we have two more that we have tentative agreements with, and we'll be hopefully bringing those forward at the next board meeting. We want to develop and implement the training program for qualifications appraisal panel members, so we have specialists who are able to sit on our interview panels and have some expertise in the subject matter. And we want to continue to effectively monitor and manage our medical claim costs. I think we do a really good job on that. We're able to not raise our, our rates for a couple of years now. And we want to expand our countywide training program to bring classes to the North County and the coast, so people don't have to travel to Ukiah all the time to come to the classes. Assign an employee wellness champion to each county department to disseminate information, advocate, and promote wellness activities, and monitor and comply with future changes in federal healthcare regulations. And we're planning, planning has started to host a second county job fair in May of 2018. That hopefully isn't on the same day as the PUC meeting. And that's, that's about it for now, and I'll be bringing a lot of stats, and we'll be having more in-depth conversations at our workshop later this summer.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Supervisor Gerardi.
Just a compliment for you and your department. I think the HR department's really outstanding.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate the work you've done for streamlining different processes because that's been one of the chronic complaints, is that the hiring process is so convoluted, and part of that is dictated by public employee hiring.
Yes.
However, you know, it seems like there were a few extra steps in there that, you know, you're in the process of correcting, so thank you.
You're welcome. We're doing our best. Thanks.
So we're all caught up?
Wow, Mr. Chair.
We have 26 and a half minutes. We could do whatever we want.
You have the executive office.
Oh, oh.
Chair McCowen. I've been sitting here waiting for my 15 minutes of fame.
You're on.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Chair McCowen, members of the board. As I, as I looked through the multiple budget units that we have for the executive office, I, I got tired. I remember in 2010, we were just the executive office, and I'm sure that some of you remember that as well. It was about 2011 that we went ahead and consolidated the executive office and the clerk of the board. And with that consolidation, we eliminated the clerk of the board position, and we were in the throes of financial problems back then. So that's when we began consolidation, integration, and really beginning to try to create efficiencies and reduce down our numbers. It was after that, I think approximately 2014, that we went ahead and consolidated the water agency into the executive office as well, and we deleted those positions, again, saving the general fund with those additional positions. And then, of course, in 2015 is when, really, under this board's direction, we looked at the General Services Agency and consolidated General Services into the executive office, which in my opinion was one of the, the best decisions that's been made. With that, we eliminated two high-level positions, again, saving the general fund. But I think the, the real value of looking at the consolidation of all the different budget units that you see, all the different activities in General Services, is having a greater understanding of county administration overall. You've seen over the last few years that this board actually gets more information than you received in the past, and that's with the consolidation. than you received in the past, and that's with the consolidation. My office has more information. And so, you're, you're getting information on fleet, on facilities, on, on information services that you weren't getting over the last few years. So, I think that in looking at the executive office in total, we have approximately thirteen budget units. While you see fourteen staff in the executive office, behind us is all the staff in central services, fleet, facilities, our mechanics, our building maintenance, information technology, they're all there. And those are your general funded staff and really core services for this county, and core support for all of those departments out there that are really serving our public and some of our disenfranchised groups. At this point, I would open it up to questions. You may have some questions on our different budget units. Clearly, there are, there are millions of dollars of general fund going into these services, but these are the services that support the almost $300 million worth of services that we provide to the community under this board's direction.
And, you know, you mentioned the, the general funded staff, and yet, I think there's some opportunities, certainly with some of the former General Services Agency functions, there ought to be an opportunity for reimbursement of A-87, and I assume we are doing that.
Yes, yes, we are.
Maybe this is an opportunity to expand a little on the, the reorganization of how we're recovering A-87 costs. And I think specifically you were referencing the application of it to HHSA, whereas before, if there was any savings at all, it would just kinda show up in the fund balance or be folded into that. So, specifically, the new approach, I believe you're saying, results in identifying about a million dollars to the credit of the general fund?
Yes, that's correct, and that's specific to HHSA. You know, we want to continue expanding the opportunities for expanding that amount if it's available, certainly if it's reimbursed to us from another source. And, and I think that, in, in large part, maybe Auditor Weir can correct me, but with the exception of HHSA, we have been collecting those, those indirect charges. I am aware in some discussions with Deputy CEO Donna Cliff that there may be some things in facilities, indirect charges, that we haven't been fully recouping from self-funded departments. So, it is our plan to, to look at that a little bit more closely, but I'm not aware of any other areas where we haven't been fully recouping those indirect costs.
So, for instance, Information Services, where they obviously do a lot of work for departments, particularly HHSA, that have their own funding sources, we have been assessing the A-87 on an ongoing basis?
Yes, and, you know, I should also say there's, there's really two ways to recoup those costs, and some of them are direct charges, and so some of these things that we're aware of and we know, we do have agreements with the agency, with the Retirement Association and things like that, and so there's a direct billing. The indirect or A-87 is the work that the auditor's office does in looking at that, those direct billings, and then the actual amount of time spent by service departments in support of that other department. And then that calculation is, is sort of anything that wasn't recouped through direct billing or another way, then would be assessed through the A-87 cost allocation plan.
Right, thank you. Auditor Controller Weir.
Lloyd Weir. So, you know, every year I'm required to prepare that plan for every department in the county, so every year we have the ability to access that amount and, and determine what the A-87 costs are for each and every department. They have been and, and will, will continue to be able to use that amount in maybe securing reimbursable costs from outside agencies, and so we're not necessarily directly charging that to their department, but they are still recouping that on the other end. And so you will see that come back to the county as revenue and be in our fund balances. So, that's also working and been working that way for a long time.
And it, you know, shows up as a line item in Budget Unit 1000.
Correct.
Other questions, comments of the executive office?
Let me start. So, I think, in my impression, being here now, four and a half years that I've seen the org, the executive office, I think, be much more streamlined and integrated with the rest of the county, and, and I think it's helpful, as you said, for the board members to be more informed of what's happening throughout the county, so I think it's all been to the good. I am also looking forward to the, the new website. It, it looks attractive, you know, compared to the old website. Haven't really spent a lot of time looking at all the different departments yet, and also looking forward to the, the new effort by the county to look at its whole information services technology. I guess we have a consultant selection process coming up on that?
Yes, our office is scheduling the, the interviews or the review of the applicant. So, we did get, I forget now if it's eight or nine proposals as a result of the RFP we did for IT master plan, so we're very pleased with the response that we've gotten.
And then I think we probably referenced it earlier, but if I remembering correctly, the grant writer would be under the supervision of the executive office as well?
Yes, we have a contract with a grant writing agency, and that is under the, the executive office. We have had the representatives, the grant writers here, they've been at our department head meeting, meeting our department heads, and they actually had two days of meetings individually with the department heads, including representatives from the sheriff's office and Health and Human Services. So, we're, we're very hopeful that our grant writers will actually find grants for us and will apply for us. So, I think, I think we're off to a good start. Alan?
Yeah, so they're very pleased with the response and ideas from the department head meetings that they had, and they are compiling all that information, and then they will bring back a draft report that we'll then bring to this board, and they'll come here and you can provide additional input before we sort of finalize the, the first plan on, on pursuing the funding, so.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair McCowen, and with the grant writers, the board wasn't interviewed or haven't had the opportunity to meet with them. And I think there's some functions that we do, other boards and commissions that we sit on, that not, you know, not necessarily any of the staff would know or department heads of, of what their needs are. And so, I'm just, you know, if, if there's a report coming forward, I wanna be able to add to that report if, if I have something that, because I know there's several times I've had to go look for grant funding, and trying to keep up with that is very difficult where they're trained to do that. So, I wanna be able to add a couple of things on.
We could do that before, before they come here for a presentation to the board. If you have specific areas of interest that you would like us to add, we could give that information to our grant writers. And then they will be here with the presentation, and they could get further direction at that time.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, if, if you're interested in an individual discussion with them, you know, our thought was we'd get all the department stuff together, and then you could take a look at all of that, and we could easily provide that with additional advance notice. You have plenty of time to review that, but if you are interested in individual meeting with, with our representatives, we'd be happy to set that up.
Supervisor Jurety?
Yeah, I'd be happy, even a phone conversation, fifteen minutes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and have our office staff arrange that, and I'm assuming that each one of you will be contacted, and you could determine if you, if you want to speak with the grant writers or not.
Thank you, Supervisor Hamburg.
I'm just, I'm just glad this topic came up because I, you know, I saw under our budget development priorities, the economic business development, that's where the grant writer program was slotted into the narrative. And I'm, I think I'm understanding that it's much broader.
Oh, yes.
So, we're looking at something that, that goes across maybe many departments.
For, for instance, when we were talking about the museum earlier, we're hoping that our grant writers could find specific grant dollars for museums. I mean, every, every area of county service is what we're looking at, and of course, if they come up with, with funding ideas for economic development, that's part of it as well. But the initial direction, as we recall from this board, was grant writing for the purposes of, you know, increasing our core services throughout the county.
Right. And where, does the grant writer program show up in individual budgets? Because I didn't, I didn't notice it in there. So, where, where is it in our overall budget?
Executive office.
Yeah, it's in executive office, right.
Because I, I missed it.
The, the contract is funded in the miscellaneous budget in 1940.
Eighteen forty, okay, thank you. And what is the amount?
Hundred thousand.
Small. We're starting small.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's a healthy amount to get us going. I mean, they're, they're pretty efficient, and depending on the type of grant, they may be in more of a support role and final kind of collaboration role, and it may still require some assistance from county staff to pull information together and whatnot. You know, we'll, we'll see, but the plan is, once the, the, this sort of initial review and plan is approved by the board, either the board or departments will let our consultant know that we wanna pursue that grant, or they'll let us know of one, and then we'll decide. But before we move forward, they submit a proposal to us for the cost of putting that application package together, and then we can give a final review. But we, we feel like, you know, a hundred thousand will be a, will be a really good start for us.
Okay.
Well, and whether a hundred thousand is a small beginning or not, it's the beginning a mere eight years after Supervisor Brown and I first suggested the county hire an outside grant writer. So, I, I'm glad we're doing this, and obviously you've seen there's interest by the board in having direct input, and, you know, frankly, I would have thought you might have had the grant writer, you know, if you're meeting with all the departments, why wouldn't you have met with the board as well, more upfront rather than after the fact? But better late than never. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, and if we're ready to leave this topic, I'd like to say something else.
And I don't know if there's any response to my inflammatory remarks or not.
We're used to it.
If not, then Supervisor Brown?
Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanna say that, having been on this board since 2009, and the way we restructured, I think, has been wonderful in seeing that happen. And I also wanna say that, Ms. Angelo, if it, you're the one that did it for us. And of course, you couldn't have done it without all five supervisors buying in and without the staff you have. So, I wanna compliment you, I wanna compliment all your staff. You know, I, I call us the Five Brats, and Herding the Cats, but bottom line is, I do appreciate it very much, and I think the way we're set up now, when I need information, I know who to go to, right, in the same complex, it's not driving across town or anything else. And then, the improvement in our website, I think is wonderful, how we distribute clerk of the board's office, distribute our agendas, get lots of compliments. Once people learn the new system, get lots of compliments off of it. And it's just, I've just seen so many improvements in my eight years on the board, I'm very pleased, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
Well, and I would add that there have been a significant number of consolidations and efficiencies that have been led by CEO Angelo, again, direction of the board, but somebody has to implement it. And since being, you know, appointed as CEO, you've won the confidence of all the departments, I believe, so that you have good working relationships, and, and I know that if, if I have some issue or question that comes up, and I, you know, don't feel I'm getting the answer, I bring the issue to the CEO, and bingo, suddenly there are answers. So, and whether it's always the answer that I like or not, at least there's an answer. So, you know, I, I, I do agree the CEO is doing an excellent job of working with all the departments to implement board direction and provide the services to the public, which of course is the only reason we're here.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? So, we have a few minutes here before.
Chair, Chair McCowen?
Yes.
Just one quick change that I, I wanted to point out related to risk management, and the, the budget includes an extra help staff assistant that would be paid for by risk management that would support the sheriff's office in trying to help them with their workers' compensation paperwork and program. And we just feel like, you know, a lot of the cases are a result of the nature of the work they do, and in working with, under Sheriff Johnson, we've determined that this might be a good way to assist them, and so we'd like to kinda do a one-year pilot project on trying this out. So, that is in the budget, and the position will be funded by risk management, but the position would be located in the sheriff's office to help them with, with the process.
Thank you. Sounds like well worth trying. And I know, you know, Risk has done a great job, I believe, with, you know, Assistant CEO Flora and Heather Correll, so I thi, I think, again, it's a great idea. Now, we do have a couple of, we, we have a number of items before we wrap up, and we do have requests from, for the Future Generations Fund, and we have the request from EDFC and West Company. I had indicated to those representatives that we would not be discussing that before 1:30 scheduled for the budget wrap-up, and we don't really have time to get into a discussion of those items right now. So, we will be reconvening at 1:30 to tie up all the loose ends with the budget. I think the, we took a formal action on one issue related to the library. The other change that the board has directed that we would, at, at this budget approval on the twentieth, dedicate $2 million to, to road improvements, corrective maintenance. There's 1.2 million and change currently recommended in the budget. The board directed that the $500,000 currently in contingency for this fiscal year be rolled into corrective maintenance, and the executive office identify other funds within the budget to bring that total to 2 million. And I don't know if, if that's been done yet, or we can simply hear about it on the twentieth, whichever way works best for the executive office.
Chair McCowen, we, we do have one question on that, and, but to answer your question, yes, Assistant CEO Flora has identified the additional $300,000. But I do respectfully request that if we, if we could leave it at 1.7 million with the understanding and expectation and direction from this board, that at the end of this fiscal year, not this fiscal year that we're in, but the fiscal year that we're developing the budget, there will be at a minimum a fund balance of $300,000. And at that point in time, that money could go back into corrective maintenance. The reality is that the, the Department of Transportation, we don't believe will spend $2 million of what you allocate today, so if you allocate 1.7 million with the expectation of the $300,000 at the end of this fiscal year going to corrective maintenance, there would be $2 million. And if that doesn't work for this board, then Assistant CEO And if that doesn't work for this board, then Assistant CEO Flora has a plan to take the $300,000 from, from other areas that we've already presented to this board. So we would reduce those areas for that $300,000. So it is your decision.
A couple of issues. Getting to the 2 million, the board absolutely wants to do that. But beyond that, we had also said that at first quarter, depending upon fund availability, we would increase that to 3.2 million. And the purpose of putting that money in there is to see that it be spent for the intended purpose. So did I misunderstand you?
No.
I thought you said the money's not going to get spent even if we allocate it.
You didn't misunderstand me. My concern is that you will allocate all these dollars. I don't know. And I, unfortunately, Howard's not here to speak to this, but I'm not certain that they will actually be able to spend all those dollars within the year. So I was just looking at 300,000. However, Assistant.
Wait, you were just looking at adding 300,000 at first quarter?
No, I was looking at getting to, to.
Well, maybe we could request that Director DeShiel be here at 1:30 and.
Well, we can, but I think.
And in the interim, perhaps over lunch, Assistant CEO Flora can distribute his recommendations for where the additional funds would come from to get to 2 million.
That would be fine.
And then we can have all that discussion when we come back. Board members, Supervisor Brown.
Well, this was presented yesterday under public expression. But I want to make sure that I'm not missing something and that it was a health and safety issue with fire district law. So what is going to happen with that? Will that be coming back on the twentieth?
Well, let's ask, because we did have the information presented. We had a request to consider it as an off-agenda item. However, I am not certain that we meet the findings to take it up as off-agenda, since it may have been known to the agency prior to agenda publication. And I think that would be a question for county council. Beyond that, the information presented as to the requirements of the law, that if a fire district adopts their own ordinance, that it must first be approved by the county, seems pretty straightforward and clear. Based on that, I'm wondering why county councils simply couldn't notify all the departments that their ordinances would not be valid unless they had been submitted to the county for approval. County Council.
Chair McCown, in response to that, this was just brought to my attention on Friday. I got further information from Lee Howard. Based on that, I contacted the attorney, the, the main one that was brought to me originally was Ukiah Valley Fire District. I contacted their attorney, Jim Lance. Some of what happened is, as you know, they had a changeover from John.
Fire, fire chiefs.
Bartlett, thank you, to, to the interim now. And so I've spoken not only to Jim Lance, but to Kurt Thompson. There were two problems with their ordinance. One, they legally had to have given this board 30 days' notice to review it and comment on it before it went to their own public hearing and was adopted. And then once it's adopted, it has to come back to this board to either modify, rescind, or enact. And so that wasn't done. But as I explained to Mr. Thompson, Chief Thompson, that they, they would still, the one that they have put forward, their ordinance, it's not, it wasn't correctly done. So they have to go back and, again, do that first process of notifying us before they go forward. They are completely in agreement with that. And so, and I've also advised them that therefore they cannot be taking any action on that ordinance, or they're incurring their own liability. It's been told to me that the same is true of Hopland. I have not verified that, so I was going to make some calls. But I did, and I appreciate this board bringing it up. I, I would, again, we don't have jurisdiction over the fire districts per se, but they, there is a, a procedure that they need to follow. And if that's the direction of this board, I would be more than willing to send a letter out from county council's office advising them that this has come to our attention. I just didn't want to get out in front of this board and make that.
Thank you.
Promise.
Well, I think that without objection, the board would recognize that it is within the purview of county council to send a letter advising all the fire districts if they want to adopt their own ordinances in line with this procedure, that there are certain steps they must follow. And, you know, I, so again, I think that would resolve the issue. It sounds like once they hear what the law actually provides, they're understanding of that. But again, I think simply send that letter to every district. And, you know, I.
And just one of the, as, also as follow-up, as I did speak with planning and building in terms of, you know, how this process works. So I am, based on that, I'm aware that not all fire districts do their own. Some come directly under us. So I will identify the ones that are doing their own and make sure.
Understood. They may not all, but they should all be advised so that the next one doesn't go down this road.
Correct.
And I certainly think it's appropriate, to the extent you know of specific ones who have adopted an ordinance, you know, maybe there's an extra paragraph for those districts.
Okay. And I, again, I'd be glad to.
Any other comments by board members?
I agree with.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Yeah, my, my impression of this, after talking to Lee, is that very few of the fire districts in the county have adopted ordinances.
That, that was my impression as well.
Nor do, at least several of the districts that were, that were mentioned, and again, this is information from Mr. Howard, in, in the fifth district, had no interest in adopting their own ordinances.
Then there's no harm if they receive a generic letter explaining what the procedure would be if they wanted to.
If they wanted to. But does that really take care of the situation? Because my understanding was that the problem was that we have, and I may have this wrong, but that we have many fire districts out there where most of the work and most of the response to those who come in to obtain permits or, you know, have some business with the fire district is by volunteers who don't necessarily have the, the, the technical background to respond to the, to the very issues that are being brought to them to make a decision on.
Well, that's why they shouldn't be thinking that they can do it unless they've gone through the proper procedures.
And I think in many cases, they're, they're not doing it. They don't have ordinances.
And they shouldn't unless they've gone through the proper procedure. And I, I didn't intend for this to become a discussion item, since we don't have it on the agenda.
I'm just wondering if maybe this should be a referral. I mean, I know Mr. Howard thinks that we.
Well, the law seems abundantly clear. And again, I'm not, I'm not even trying to give board direction. I'm simply trying to recognize the, the ability of county council to provide an advisory letter to the districts.
And does county council feel that that will deal with the problem?
So what I was planning to do was send out a, basically a two-part letter. One is, if you're going to do this, you do need to have an ordinance. And without an ordinance, a past ordinance that has gone through this procedure, you cannot be applying laws that are stricter than the standing, standard, state standard building codes, so.
Okay. Well, if you think, if you think that's a good way to go, then I'll go along with it.
And if there's any further issues with it, then it could come back as an agenda item. That'd be my suggestion. CEO Angelo.
Chair McCown, on, on the issue before this, I'm assuming that we've just resolved this issue. I want to be clear. Would you like Director Dashill here at 1:30 so we could just finish this discussion? I know I made a comment about how much work that the Department of Transportation could actually get done this year. And I know that that was a concern when I said it. So if you'd like Director Dashill here at 1:30 to speak to that, he can be here.
If, if he's able to be here, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
And then we can have a fully informed discussion.
Great.
Chairman, the reason I would like that is because I'm, when the CEO said that 1.7 million in corrective maintenance would probably not be performed within the 12-month fiscal year, I didn't understand what, what you meant by that.
Yes, so.
Particularly when the board has directed that perhaps additional money from our MRA be put into corrective maintenance.
Yes.
Why would we do that if we can't expend it?
So.
And the idea that we couldn't spend it when, you know, there, there must be a quay of projects lined up and, you know.
Well, there's, there must be some reason that we don't understand.
So let me just say that I, I could absolutely be wrong, which is why I would like Director Dashill here to speak to this.
And ideally, when he addresses it at 1:30, he will explain how he would be happy to utilize any funding that the board devotes to corrective maintenance.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Supervisor Jordy.
And we'll go into this in the afternoon. But I mean, when you're talking about corrective maintenance, it's resurfacing. It's a very simple RFP or, you know, bidding process. I mean, that's why when the, the county of Mendocino had RF funding, it was very simple for, for the county of Mendocino to resurface many, many miles of roads, because it's a very simple, quick process. It's not anything like designing a bridge or placing a bridge.
Exactly. And it shouldn't, therefore should not interfere with any of the emergency repairs that, that we hope to have underway. So.
Great.
We look forward with interest to 1:30. And we do have a closed session, working lunch, agenda item number nine pursuant to Government Code Section, yeah, only 9A, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiators, Carmel J. Angelo, Heather Kaufman, Heidi Dunham, Alan Flora, Tammy Moss Chandler, Ann Mulgarde, Sherri Johnson, and Donna Williamson, employee organizations all. And we have previously had the clarification that Supervisor Kroski is able to fully participate in all of the labor negotiations. So we will take a 10-minute break and then reconvene in closed session for our working lunch. Good afternoon. We're reconvening for our afternoon session and conclusion of item 5B from yesterday, the budget hearings, discussion and possible action to approve the Mendocino County proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18, including all recommended actions and adjustments. And it is a notice public hearing. Oh, and a report out of closed session, the board, and thank you, Carla, keeping us on task, or me on task. Report out of closed session, agenda number 9A, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiators, Carmel J. Angelo, Heather Kaufman, Heidi Dunham, Alan Flora, Tammy Moss Chandler, Ann Mulgarde, Sherri Johnson, and Donna Williamson, employee negotiations all. Information was provided to the board and direction was given to staff. And so now we resume the public hearing for our budget hearings. And one issue before the break was executive office stated that they had determined a, a recommendation for getting the board to 2 million for corrective maintenance. We also had the discussion that Department of Transportation might not be able to utilize the full 2 million for corrective maintenance, but, so the board would like to have more information and discussion on that. Director DeShiel.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Howard DeShiel, Director of Transportation. I heard most of your comments, and I think the answer is that it is true that the money you put in a fiscal year budget often is not spent in that same fiscal year. And the reason for that is, is that as the board knows, usually about February, I bring you a plan and a director's report for the corrective maintenance program. Then I typically come back in March with a, a authorizing resolution to advertise an award. We usually open bids and award in May. The contractors will get started, but they won't, because the fiscal year ends June 30th, they won't have expended the money. Most contractors, when they bid, look at the whole construction season as when they plan all the work they're doing. And even in years where the construction actually gets done before June 30th, often their paperwork lags, and they don't even get the invoices until July or, or August. So what I wanted to offer the board, and what I think I was hearing before the lunch break, is that if, if the board were at this point in the year, I'm just, and maybe I've got this wrong, but if they were at this point in the year, next year, and right now we have 1.25 million that we've said we want to have in corrective maintenance, and if there were other monies there, the board will recall that there have even been years I've come back to you because I put additive alternates on the bids. And maybe you'll even remember a few years back, we were able to do more than 2 million. We had favorable bids and we had these additives. So, and I've actually laid that out for you when I bring you the plan and when I bring you the action. So that if, if we were hoping that there was going to be even more than 2 million, because I usually try to have more additives than I have money, you know, we could quickly add those. Again, what I wanted to express, though, like even to Supervisor Jordy, is typically, typically it takes us three months from when we start a project to when we award. It's just the system. Sometimes we can push it to two. So if I, even though it's a simple contract, if I were to start in June, I'd be lucky to getting it awarded by August. And then there's very little time to bid it. And also, we found that the contractors sharpen their pencils better when we get our bidding done in late winter, early spring, or spring. You know, during the summer, they're busy. They've already got their workload. We just found we get more bids and we get a better situation to do that spring bidding. So, but I'm, I'm still would be able to work with the board if we wanted to plan to have additives that we could quickly, we truly could quickly award those in June or July next year. Typically, you have to tell the contractor when the 60 days of bid opening, what your additives are going to be. But if we open in May, we knew what money we had in June, that's within 60 days, we could quickly, we could scale the contracts. But yeah, it's true. I don't typically spend it all within that fiscal year. That is true, because you've got to look at the whole summer.
Supervisor Jordy.
So I just, what we're talking about is the $2 million now in the budget, adopted in June. And then there's a likelihood that in the first quarter, when there's a true-up of the account, that there'll be additional funds, and the board would be directing that up to 1.2 million extra, which is the conservative estimate of how much will come in from the new state funding, that we would have a total of 3.2 million. That would be known by the end of the first quarter, early part of the second quarter. So I think it would all work for next spring's bidding process. And I totally get what you're saying, that it straddles the two fiscal years, the, the construction season.
Well, in fact, Supervisor Jordy, part of the reason, you know, as you know, the board used to adopt the final budget in August or September. So that usually fit. And then we'd come with a plan in February and we, you know. But what you're saying would work as well. If we knew by then, we'd come back to you in about February with a plan, and we'd do it like we normally do.
Correct. So, you know, we appreciate the clarification. But I, I believe we're being told that yes, if the board designates in this budget approval a minimum of 2 million for corrective maintenance and potentially increases it to 3.2 at first quarter, although all the funds won't be expended in fiscal year 1718, you'll have no problem putting those projects out to bid.
Correct. You'll know before the end of that fiscal year. I believe in the directors. Correct. You'll know before the end of that fiscal year. I believe in the director's report today, I happen to be alerting you to the bid results, so you'll know that by then, what the bids were and what we were able to award.
Right. But if you don't have it upfront, I mean, the projects aren't going to get done.
Well, I could.
You're not objecting to us putting more money into the budget for corrective maintenance?
Never.
Because it's over and above everything else that you've asked for.
Never. But I also, if I thought there could be additional money, and sometimes I've even done that with my, like, Shemese will come say, "Looks like we can't hire anybody, we're going to have salary savings." I planned additives, and the board will remember. Some years, you get this report, and it says more than 2 million. You know, you can go back and look, and that's because we came to you and said, "Oh, we want to get, we want to put another couple hundred thousand in that has." It hasn't happened in the last two years because we've been cut, but if you go back three years, we were doing those kinds of things.
We'll be open to that as well.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is even if I didn't have 2 million right now, we could, if you're telling me by next December, we could plan it out and you could give me the extra money at the end of next year, we could add it on to the contract. That's what I'm trying to say.
Right. Well, I think partly the intent of the board is we want to assure the public that we are staying the course with what we've identified really as a minimal amount of funding, but we want people to know that we're sticking to that and going above it to the extent feasible.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? Do I answer everything?
I think we've covered that and confirmed our board direction. There may be some other questions on the emergency repairs. I don't know if anyone has another comment to add to that. You've given us your explanation that you're going to make certain areas a priority.
Right.
Including Leightonville Dos Rios was identified, that one obvious one that needs some help, so.
Absolutely. And I will, in my next director's report for the 21st, do a full update as I was directed yesterday, you know, in that report, so.
Thank you.
On storm damage.
Thank you. That may take us to the special requests or additional requests that we had presentations on yesterday for the Future Generations Fund and also for the EDFC West Proposal. Oh, excuse me, we, how do we get to the 2 million was the other part of the corrective maintenance issue. And Assistant CEO Flora was going to elaborate on that.
Well, coming up with the funding over the 1.715 will require reductions in other areas of the budget to meet that. So what, what we've discussed is, is what you see here. So the bar or the column on your left is what is, was currently proposed to get to the 1.215. To bring it to 2 million, we would need to reduce the increase to the pension gap reserve by 150,000. We would include the 500,000 contingencies fund balance from 1617 that was discussed earlier, reduce the contingency amount by 100,000, continue with the 1 million of cannabis tax, and then slightly increase the budgeted RMR funding from 215,000 to 250,000.
So the additional pension reserve would then be 850,000 directed to that. The, what you add is the fund balance adjustment would be 500,000.
So, yeah, that would leave 250,000 in contingencies.
Right.
And bring the pension gap reserve balance to 4.5.
Well, I appreciate the thoughtful approach there. It doesn't detract directly from anything else that we're already budgeting for and planning for, so I could certainly support that. Board members?
But before we move on, if I could, Chairman Cowan, I did just want to point out one thing, and I haven't had a chance today to do the exact calculation on it, but I did want the board to be aware that reducing the contingency to this level may be slightly below the board's adopted policy. The board policy says that the minimum contingency amount should be 250,000 in fiscal year 1213, and the minimum amount should be increased by the CPI index each year. If we use a three-year or a 3% average over that time, that would be about 287,000 would be the minimum level. And I didn't have a chance to pull out the exact CPI adjustments over that time, but I do think that the board should at least be aware of that.
I appreciate providing that information. I think the board, you know, at their discretion can make this one-time adjustment to that. You know, certainly if we all vote for it, it's the type of thing that, you know, any policy, typically any policy or rule we have can be overridden by a four-fifths vote. And I don't know that this is something hard and fast, you know, it's a policy. But balance that with the level of reserves that we have, if we did have an absolute need to exceed the, a quarter of a million in contingency, I think the county is in good shape to do that. Board members?
I think it's a reasonable proposal, but you are only talking $37,000, which could come from some other place. I'm sure if you had more than a few hours to find it.
So hearing no objection, the board endorses your recommendation for the adjustments necessary to approve 2 million for the corrective maintenance fund?
And then just to be absolutely clear, your board has also directed that when we do the first quarter update, which would be in October or early November, if there is additional fund balance over what was estimated, your direction is that 1.2 million of that would be directed to corrective maintenance programs.
And I don't know if that's specific to any fund balance, or if that was more to additional RMR funding coming through?
I think it was the.
That's kind of what I thought.
Also, yeah.
Well, I've got at least four.
Okay.
I don't think it was general fund balance. I think it was RMR money.
Because it was around the discussion of the 1.2 versus the 2.5.
2.5.
And I don't know if Director Dashill wants to, wants to address that.
Well, that, that would be more money than we expect, and I think that unless we had some other disaster going then, and we had another discussion, I think that would be a good idea to put it to, to corrective maintenance. And like I said, if I know by October, November, I can easily start planning it, so.
Thank you. So that we may have resolved that issue and clarified board direction and where the funding will come from. That does bring us to the additional requests for funding presented by First Five on behalf of the Future Generations Fund and EDFC West Company. Board members? Supervisor Jordy.
Well, I'll start out. So on the EDFC West Company proposal, I've spoken with West Company Director Marion and with county staff about the fact that part of their issue is they spent down their reserves in the last year because, West Company did at least, because there were gaps in receiving program income that the county fully intended to get to them, and just there were delays with the state, as can happen. And that, I think, has created some anxiety within the organization because they're, they're down to fumes in terms of their reserves. So, but, but on the other hand, the county does have program income, they, they do work that's eligible to receive reimbursement for that. There's every intention of their receiving those funds. They're not general fund dollars. The county needs to spend those dollars down in order to apply for a new grant, which the county intends to do. But if, if the unforeseen were to happen, and there were some delay, could be caused by the state, maybe not by the county, but was not their fault, let's say, then I think a reasonable compromise would be for the county to say, "We're going to provide some kind of equivalent of a line of credit for them that would fill the gap if there was a delay in receiving those funds," or if, and remember, if work has proceeded that wasn't authorized in an expenditure, you don't get reimbursed later. It has to be authorized by the state first. So it could be a non-reimbursable line of credit if, but again, this would, that would be, that's the concept. And when I talked to CEO Carmel Angelo and Alan, they were comfortable with that concept, and I think the details could be worked out later. But that's, that's what I felt was probably appropriate at this point.
And we have examples of that in our history.
Well, and so then, is there a, do you have a number in mind of what level the line of credit would be at? I assume at a minimum, the perceived funding gap?
I don't know the, I don't know the dollar amount, if they might have that. I don't know what, for example, what would six months in delay in administering the program income cause to them in their, in terms of their expenses? That might be a reasonable timeframe.
Right. Well, yesterday, in response to a question, I believe we were told that they, due to the delays, they had experienced a $20,000 funding gap in 1617 and anticipated 130,000 to 150,000 funding gap in 1718.
I think we were, we were talking about approximately a line of credit for 200 or 250,000, which I think would be, would be close to the figures that, that you've just talked about.
And then it sounds like that isn't, we could simply give direction that that is something that we would set up, and it doesn't necessarily have to be part of current budget approval, or?
I would ask the auditor if, basically, it would be a line of credit. We're not saying we would expend that money, but we could expend it in the fiscal year. So would we have to actually set it aside, or could we take it out of?
It should be an appropriation, excuse me, Lloyd, we're on, it should be an appropriation in one of our budget lines for a possible expenditure during the year, which would require a funding source. I believe there's been some, some treasury, treasury borrowings that, that we could talk to Sherri about.
It was a rec.
We have, right, we've done that before.
Coastal Rec Center.
Right.
Or recreational district.
And then they, they back through their tax dollars.
Yeah, so we're a line of credit and a loan, then they would simply pay the foregone interest that we otherwise would have received if they utilize the line of credit. So in that regard, it's not really an appropriation, or is it? I mean, I think we're trying to find a way to do this without having to reduce another budget line item.
I'll have to research those borrowings to see if, if there was an appropriation attached to those. It seems like we can accomplish that without, without the appropriation, but I will, I will get, I will look into that.
And then we could bring that back on June 20th. Alan, Lloyd, do you think so?
I do want to clarify, I had a subsequent discussion with our interim planning building director and Adrian Thompson about this concept after we had talked to Supervisor Jordy, and at this time, we're unaware of a way that that could ever, I mean, could ever be reimbursed through the CDBG program income. There isn't a way to funnel that back, so I don't see a way for it to be recovered. It would just be a general fund expense, essentially giving them that, that funding if there was a gap in CDBG fund. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. I mean, we get, we haven't looked into it that much, but that's our understanding at this point.
Correct. And however, they do have, you know, some level of current funding, so maybe this is something that could be accommodated at first quarter? Or no?
Well, I mean, we, we aren't aware of any impending issues with their CDBG funding at this point, so I don't know that it's a critical path issue right now.
Well, that's what I'm kind of saying, in that there's, I'm sensing an approval and concept of identifying this line of credit with the understanding it might actually result in a general fund expenditure that won't be recoverable. But, you know, I, I think potentially, because I don't, I don't hear that it's critical that it, that they need the money in the next, you know, 120 days or something, we could give direction that this will be a priority at first quarter?
Yes.
And is that, board members?
I'll agree.
And is there anyone here from EDFC West who would like to speak to that? We will take public comment on this issue at this time.
Yeah, Paul Garza, President of the Board of West Company. I can only say we'd be most grateful for that kind of assistance. I do think our, our, our financial situation is a little bit more squeezed than Supervisor Jordy is expressing, but nonetheless, we'd be very grateful for that kind of assistance. It would, it would make this possible, you know, a few years ago, West Company had developed a very healthy reserve, but unfortunately, because of the problems with the county's CDBG fund, all of that was expanded in just keeping the program operating. So this would be, yeah, we'd be most grateful for this assistance.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the issue of EDFC West funding? Seeing no one come forward. I do want to say, part of the proposal was to designate EDFC West as the economic development entity for the county. I certainly would be supportive of that. I don't know that we actually need to make that designation today, but board members, you're, and as well, some level of enhanced funding. I think that the ask in front of us is pretty ambitious, and my inclination might be to, you know, maybe provide increased funding going forward, but maybe on a more graduated basis. And other than the direction we've given today, I don't see anything right now, but I'd like to hear from other board members on the essence of the proposal. Supervisor Hamburg?
Well, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I do support the direction of West and EDFC becoming a single entity to the extent that that, that that will work for those organizations. And I know that there's consideration of there being a single governing board, a single CEO, a single entity, and that that entity would be the focal point for economic development activities in Mendocino County. And when, when I look at, at the narrative of our budget, and I look at the budget development priorities, you know, it's a, it's a five-bullet list. And bullet number two, of course, is economic business development. And when you look at what's under economic business development, it's our grant writer program, which is our $100,000 program we talked about this morning, supporting new housing development, which I think we basically do through CDBG mainly. I don't, you know, we, we certainly support the concept of there being new housing development, but, you know, we're really not in the housing construction business. We're supporting an MHSA housing development that's being carried forward by Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. And then the third area is broadband, and I think we put about, we have been putting like $40,000 into a, into a position. I think there's a, I think in our budget, we're increasing that by 10,000, and I, and I think that's great. I think Trish Steele does a really good job. And of course, I've been involved with the Broadband Alliance of Mendocino County for almost as long as I've been on the board this time. But when you look at the amount of resources we put into economic development in terms of, you know, real county cash resources, and compare that with what we're spending on tourism development, for example, which is a part of the business economy and economic development. But, you know, I think usually when we talk about economic and business development, we're talking about more the kinds of things that, that Mr. Garza brought up yesterday, that John Goldsmith was talking about, that John Curry was talking about. And it's, it's, it's way beyond tourism, obviously. You know, it's, it's entrepreneurship, it's. You know, it's entrepreneurship, it's feeding small businesses and help them to become bigger businesses. I think we heard a lot from Mr. Garza and Mr. Goldsmith yesterday about some of the businesses that have been spawned by EDFC and West Company, but they've kind of bumped up against our limitations. And so what they have brought us is a proposal to really try to leverage their very excellent boards and staff to do something that we really haven't done a lot of. I mean, I think there are other counties, I mean, I know Sonoma County's our big brother down there, they have a very expansive economic development program. So I don't know, I don't feel that, you know, maybe I'm reading the board wrong, but that there's a lot of support for, you know, a large commitment or a three-year commitment of funds, but, and I appreciate what Supervisor Jurdie has brought up with respect to making sure that West Company can continue to function. But I would, you know, I'm one board member who would like to see more of our resources going into business support, access to capital, attracting business, helping businesses to expand, creating, I mean, these are the things that EDFC has outlined, a digital business hub, a startup investment program. I mean, the way that we are going to become, our number one goal is fiscal stability. And, you know, we're kind of treading water in some ways, or, you know, we've sort of ridden this improvement in the economy over the last five, six years, and with a lot of careful budgeting, we've gotten ourselves in way better position, but we're really not going to attain fiscal stability until we get more business development in the county. And I think this is a way for the board to say, you know, yes, we really, we really do think this is important, and we think that these two organizations can help us to, you know, can help lead the way. So, you know, I'd like to hear more from my colleagues, but, you know, I think that, you know, we have a lot of budgetary responsibilities, obviously, and I'm not surprised that the board is not jumping on, you know, spending half a million dollars a year over the next three years, but I think a consideration of something smaller than that would be a wise investment.
Supervisor Kroski.
Thank you, Chairman. And, you know, I think I find myself a little bit in the middle here. I think it often is, you know, do we try to invest in businesses to build up our tax base so that we, then we can pay our employees more? Do we try to increase our salaries, make our county, you know, more inviting in that way to bring in more people? And I think it's hard when we have a limited budget on what to do for that. You know, I have less history with this company and with knowledge of it, and I think, at least from my part, I would like to see a little more of data on what things have happened. I mean, just other than a few anecdotal companies that were helped, I have a hard time saying, let's give this much money, without maybe a little more data on impact that has happened from these two companies. So I think that I also would support giving some money, because I do think business growth is very important in this county, but I would agree with Supervisor Hamburg that I think this is probably more than I feel comfortable investing in this company and, or this joining company, and certainly more than I feel comfortable without, you know, a real detailed idea of the true impacts that we've seen from the county or for the county.
First of all, I totally compliment both boards to working together and bringing forward a proposal, but I think it's sort of the beginning of a process that I see. And so I'd be perfectly happy if our board would have a commitment to maybe a joint workshop with them in the first quarter of, which is really only July, August, September, or somewhere in that timeframe, to discuss options. And, you know, I don't see a scenario where there's $800,000 available to contribute, you know, we might be talking $50,000, maybe it's $100,000. I don't know where it'll land, but I think it's probably more in that range, if anything. And so, but I think if we had a joint workshop and we had options two, three months down the road, you know, maybe that would rise to a level where we'd feel comfortable committing those kinds of funds, should they be available in the first quarter.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair McCowen, and it's interesting hearing all our comment, and I thank you, Supervisor Hamburg. I think business development is very important. The county of Mendocino has many, many needs, and where we find ourselves is trying to balance all those needs and not enough money to do that. And I still feel, after coming on the board in 2009, and everything we had to face the first three, four years I was on the board, where I didn't even know if we could make payroll that first year, it, you know, it's pretty scary. So it's caused me to be very conservative, and when I see the money, when we get that money, that's the time to discuss how you split the pie. And it's nothing against EDFC. I've had a long history with West Company and know what they do and have done throughout the years. I know Supervisor Hamburg as well, with West Company. You know, it is, it's great. However, I, you know, I can't commit that at this time. I think Supervisor Kroski hit it on the head. When we're looking at salary raises for employees, when we're looking at children's issues, emergency services issues, deteriorating roads, I mean, it's just all, it really pulls me every which way. And I just have to be conservative till I see the pot of gold sitting there that may come in the cannabis tax, then we have more to talk about. That's where I'm at. I can't move any further than what we have just discussed in giving more funds at this time.
Thank you. And Supervisor Hamburg, did you have a follow-up?
No.
So, you know, I do think I'm hearing a lot of support for West and for EDFC and for the county formally identifying EDFC West as the economic development entity for the county. You know, we have a tab labeled economic development. That really is a euphemism for the money that we shift over to our promotional board, you know, a very worthwhile endeavor, obviously, and funded through a portion of the transient occupancy tax, but it's really not economic development in the classic sense. It's tourism development and promotion, which is key to the county's economy, but I would like to see more direct focus on economic development, and I think EDFC and West could help us in that regard. But I also agree with all the comments regarding funding currently. I think the board has taken a very significant step in giving direction for staff to come back at first quarter with a prioritization of establishing a line of credit or other mechanism that guarantees that there will be no funding gap for EDFC West. And I think that's the beginning point that we can build on, and this proposal came, you know, a little late in the budget process, and I think as EDFC and West continue their discussions on a closer collaborative relationship, I think we can clarify specific areas in which EDFC West can be a real benefit to the county that will justify increasing the allocations that we make to them. Supervisor Hamburg?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do want to also recognize Mary Ann Petrio, who was on our screen the other day, and compliment the West Company Board of Directors for their wisdom in hiring her. She just seems like a very first-class individual who has a lot of business experience that she brings to the county, to West Company and to the county. And I think one of the reasons that I looked very carefully at this proposal was because of the kind of background that she brings, and certainly, it applies to people like Mr. Garza and their board and the board of EDFC. I think there's a lot of expertise, a lot of energy, and, you know, again, I do think economic development is definitely, we all realize this, is more than promoting tourism. It's about encouraging businesses to come here, encouraging businesses to expand, encouraging people who have great ideas to turn those into businesses, which turn them into tax revenue, which supports this whole enterprise. So I do appreciate the chair's idea that this is a beginning and this is a partnership, and I like Supervisor Jurdie's idea that perhaps we should collaborate more, and as new tax monies become available, and maybe our grant writer program will come up with some good ideas for us. But I would like to work more closely, you know, have a closer relationship between this board and the boards of West and EDFC, so that we can assist in your efforts, which I think are very laudable.
Thank you. I think that concludes the board's deliberations on that request. We've given direction to staff, and we'll look forward to the first quarter report. The Future Generations Fund, as proposed by First Five, dedicate 20% of cannabis tax revenue to the Future Generations Fund, initially perhaps starting at 10% and ratcheting up to 20% by 2020, is the essence of the proposal. Board members?
Well, I would like to just read back to the board and the public what the public voted to do with the tax. I mean-
It was an advisory measure.
Sure, it was advisory, but it was advised only a few months ago. And that was that a majority of the funds should, advisory, go towards enforcement of the marijuana regulations, repair of county roads, enhance mental health services, and enhanced fire and emergency medical response services. And in our budget, granted, we've taken a conservative approach, but maybe not, we've taken a conservative approach of $1.7 million in cannabis revenues, and we've more than committed those funds between the activities of the cannabis program and then the million dollars that we've allocated that we hope will be there for the roads. So, but those, so we've done more than, in a sense, we've promised the voters in that we've committed 100% of the funds to two of the four activities. We still have two activities that we've not allocated one penny to, that were, that the voters did advise they would like to see some cannabis dollars go towards. I fully expect that we will in future years, as the cannabis revenues increase, that the board will be in a position to be able to spend some portion of them on enhanced mental health services and fire and emergency medical response. One reason why we did not see a single firefighter here or a fire chief was because they were advised by, at least me and probably others, do not show up at our budget hearings. We're taking a conservative approach to the budget process. We won't have extra money to allocate to fire and emergency medical services in this year's budget from cannabis tax revenues, so they weren't here. And, but this group has come, but I personally would feel it'd be something of betrayal to the voters if we committed some cannabis tax dollars to something that wasn't on the list before we ever got to two of the four items that were on the list. And finally, we were very, I think, pragmatic and honest with the voters in suggesting a majority, but not 100% of the funds to those four activities, because we're well aware, and as the voters are, that the county has many, many, many obligations that is unable to fully fund with its existing funding streams. We do need some portion of those cannabis tax dollars just for other county services. So I would put all those before putting some new project in the pipeline, and I'm also just against the idea of budget balloting, where you're allocating a percentage of any one revenue stream to an activity like this, especially when it wasn't part of the ballot process.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chair McCowen, and thank you Supervisor Jurdie. I think the reason it didn't make it on, the advisory measure, was because we weren't thinking about it at the time. Had a number of people that were here speaking known about it, they would have been here to add that. And again, we have a lot of obligations and we have a lot of needs. I will say, we did increase by, can't remember how much now, I'd have to open my book, but allocation to the family resource centers. And we've definitely working with HHSA, seeing increases in their funding, but I don't want to say no, because there are a couple of questions I ask myself almost every day, or how are the children? And the other one is, how are our elders doing? And we heard a lot about elders as well yesterday. So I'm not just willing to let this go. The community did support a number of the needs that we do have on the advisory ballot measure, but I strongly recommend that we move children services over to those priorities that we had previously listed, and I'm sure if it would have been on there, we probably would have even gotten a higher amount of support. Like Supervisor Jurdie, I'm not willing to commit at this time 20%, because we don't know what we're going to get. I just feel that whatever's over, what we're looking at committing right now, then we can come back and look and see where those dollars can go.
Thank you. Other board members? Supervisor Kroski?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I'll have to follow up. I agree, you know, quite strongly with both of your opinions. I'm not willing to say, no, we're not going to commit some of these monies to them, but I have a hard time with the percentage, especially a percentage of something we don't know, especially a percentage when we haven't already fulfilled things we said we would do. But, you know, certainly as a member of this community and as a mother, as a volunteer in the schools that sees a lot of these issues coming through, you know, I think it is important that we have some of these programs. So, you know, I don't want to say just, no, we're not going to do anything, but I don't see that we can give 20% of this and still feel okay with what we're going to, you know, put forth to the things that the voters said we should put money towards.
Thank you. Supervisor Hamburg?
So I agree with what everybody has said, but I think one of the things that really impressed me about this presentation, in spite of the fact that this was not one of the things in the advisory measure, was how much support it drew from so many different quarters. You know, I saw our HHSA director yesterday lobbying for this. I see, I believe, Camille Schrader, who's in the audience, was also advocating for this, many, many individuals. The board did approve a statement that was brought to us by the Policy Council on Children and Youth, which dealt directly with this matter. So I think there's a huge amount of public support for putting money into educating our youth about drug use. And I, you know, you can call cannabis an herb or a drug, but regardless, we all know that it has many deleterious effects on young people, and I think it is our responsibility to put resources into that. I'm not, you know, I'm also uncomfortable with the percentage. I think we are talking, though, about money that is left over from the cannabis tax after we pay the costs of the administration of the program and the enforcement of the program, right? So that was where I thought, well, if you take all those costs out and you look at, okay, here's how much money's left in the tax, why couldn't you say, well, 10% or 5% or 1% or some percent of that will go to educating our youth about, you know, the dangers that are inherent in trying to help families to deal with this new environment in which cannabis is probably going to be more out there than even, you know, in the pre-legalization era. era. So, you know, like all, well, like my colleagues who have spoken in favor of this, I very much support putting money into education, funding local drug abuse prevention programs. I would probably, I would probably be okay with a percentage, but it doesn't sound like there's a lot of support for that. But I would definitely think we should include it in our list of priorities.
Thank you. And we're going to go to the public pretty soon, but I think, you know, we were reluctant to identify a percentage when the original proposal was presented. And I think I might have been advocating for it at the time, but anyway, the board in its wisdom chose not to. And I do find myself agreeing with a lot of the opinions expressed here, although they're not all in sync with each other. But the point that Supervisor Jirdy made, that we did say in the advisory measure that we asked the board to reflect back to us if they agreed, that a majority of the funds would be spent for four specific items. And I can agree that had there been advocates for enhanced child services, prevention, et cetera, we may well have included that in the measure as well. But, you know, ultimately, it was not included and four specific items were. And we've allocated 100% of the projected revenue to address two of those. So, I think it's kind of a, keeping the faith with the voters to not go outside of that at this time. And yet, we are already funding some services. And so, if you look on page 17 of the proposed budget overview, we have a public health outreach contract for $50,000 and a senior public health nurse for $54,000, as identified under the, part of the $708,000 for cannabis compliance and enforcement. And can someone provide specifics on what those two line items are actually intended to do? And then, I would also say that the county funds a lot of children's services, and it's true, a lot of it is intervention rather than prevention. But, you know, we have critical needs in our children's services that the board has been working to try and upgrade and improve. So, it's not that we don't spend money for, that benefit children currently. So, Ms. Mulgarde, please come forward. The issue of the public health contract and senior nurse.
And Mulgarde, Health and Human Services. I actually do not have an answer for the senior nurse. I know that the other position, it was designed to do, just like we do tobacco decoy buys, we were asked by the people who were writing the ordinance to do marijuana decoy buys, to make sure that people aren't selling to anybody underage. And so, that was what the initial thing was for.
That'd be the contract presumably, rather than the public health nurse.
I shouldn't say because I'm not 100% sure.
CEO Angelo may have info? My understanding, one, the contract I thought was for education, but aside from that, I could be wrong. I thought the public health nurse was in here for the epidemiology issues around cannabis as we're doing edibles. It would make perfect sense, actually, to have a public health nurse in here to handle epidemiology, which will be a big issue once we start dealing legally with edibles. So, I hope that helps, Ann.
That was discussed, the other thing that was discussed was the public information campaign, because there are so many people who don't understand how many infant and child deaths there are because of edibles. It gets so strong, potent, so that was part of it.
So, actual deaths?
Actual deaths.
Through, I thought it was impossible to die of too much marijuana.
Not when you only weigh 15 pounds. So, so that's what I-
And that, of course, the, you know, pregnant mothers should not be utilizing drugs, including marijuana.
And First Five has done a lot of that work around pregnant mothers. We actually designed a campaign that was used in 20 other counties because they liked it so much about, you know, people say, I'm nauseous, it helps with my nausea, but it's going straight into that baby, and what does that mean? And we don't know a lot of those answers yet because the epidemiology studies haven't yet been done. There's been some work in Canada, but there's a lot we don't know. But we will be knowing because both Washington and Colorado have put a lot of money into their statewide public health systems. The other thing, I don't know if Rosani Barra mentioned it, but I do want to mention that, you know, First Five, tobacco smoking is going down. First Five is losing money and will go out of business. So, anybody who's thinking that, oh, First Five can pay for that, that might be true this year or next year, but it's not true over the long haul. And I just also wanted to remind you of one other thing. This group did come to the board and ask to be put on the ordinance in which you listed the four priorities, and we're told it was too late. Nothing had gone to print yet, but I think it was the board's decision that to keep it more focused would be better. So, I just want to be clear that, you know, the narrative doesn't spin that anybody was voting against, you know, spending money on kids, because I don't think that was true at all.
No, but I do think that people did not come forward with that proposal in time for it to be included in the ballot measure.
Yeah.
So, I, we can go back and research that, but I don't think that was in front of us explicitly, and we said, no, we don't want to include that. But be that as it may, here we are now.
Here we are now.
I'm not hearing a flat no, but I'm hearing a not now. And we'll have a comment from Supervisor Brown, and then I want to go to the public.
Okay. Well, I still think we should move it over to our priority list. And maybe it's on the bottom, but I do feel it should be a priority, especially with the passage of Proposition 64.
Thank you. Public comment to this item? Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Kathy Harp. Good afternoon, everyone. I have total respect for everything that you guys do and all the work that you do, but I'm here also to remind you that I am a county employee, and there's a whole bunch of us out there, and that, to keep us in mind, too, that we should be on that special list, that the next contracts, that we're still underpaid, overworked. There are many, most of the departments need some money also. It's unknown to what the tax is going to come from the cannabis. It's hard to say. I was hoping that, from the get-go, that the employees were going to be in that list for the next, the next contracts that go out. And I think that's mainly, I'm not saying that that's not a good group, I'm just saying that's a lot of money, percentage-wise. It seems very high. And I know we have children's services that really needs to be looked at, and we have the adult services that need to be looked at and need money also. So, anyway, just a reminder to you all, and I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair McCowen, members of the board, Rosani Barra, Executive Director for First Five Mendocino. I want to thank you all for your consideration of our proposal. And I only ask, when should we come forward again if at this point in time you're not prepared to commit to a percentage? Is there, are you thinking maybe after January? Or if you have a recommendation at this point?
Early and often, probably.
That was the only question I have. And then, just a comment. I was here back in August when this original request came forward, and at that time, that was the message that the advocates have, were at the table too late. And that is part of the issue, that you yourselves, there was a comment that no one thought of the kids. So, that's part of my job and all the other child advocates, so we will be coming back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Supervisor Brown?
I'll wait until after Carol.
Okay.
Carol Morthorst. And I guess one of the things I would like to remind Chair McCowen is when we met and talked about my endorsement for the ordinance, one of the things that we talked about was kids and how the idea that what we wanted to do with education could fit under the mental health thing, because it is about children's mental health. And so, I do think that a good faith measure could be to authorize it towards that education for their behavioral health, mental health needs, and it would fit within the ordinance and would at least be a pledge and a start of good faith, and that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Did you want to comment now or after public comment?
Well, is there anyone else?
Is there any additional public comment? Please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it up.
Thank you, Chair McCowen. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Redwood Flower, Elder Sherwood Valley Ranch Rio. My people believe in protecting the next generation. My mother taught me that when someone is expecting a child, keep the mother happy because what goes on in the womb is what the child, when it is physically born, will be, and all the years of growing up. Now, Mr. McCowen, Chair McCowen, the rest of the board, our staff, we are raising a generation of drug addicts. I was born and raised in this community. I'm a member of the Behavioral Health Board. My sheriff and I, Sheriff Almond, agree on this issue. He knows his jail is getting full, day by day. We've heard from the DA how many murders there are. I say to you, be careful about the decisions you make because the next generation will suffer. They're suffering already. We need to put our taxpayers' money into flesh and blood for the next generation. I certainly believe in economic development. For years, I had tried to buy my own beauty salon, but I didn't have collateral. And I can tell you, I'm a very, very good hairdresser and cosmetologist. I'm well experienced. So, I urge you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the board, to seriously consider, seriously consider your decisions today because it affects the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Please come forward. Seeing no one, it's back to the board. Board members, additional comments, direction?
Well, just all, again, the state tax that the voters approved is a 15% tax. We have a 2.5% county tax. This is a producer county, whereas the state, you could say, is a consumer state. So, there's going to be an awful lot of state tax collected in the consuming parts of the state with the population. And at this point, no one knows how much, if any, but I think there will be some money from the state that will be spent on education to keep children. After all, it was the adult medical, or it was the adult recreational use. It wasn't, it's not intended for kids, it's for 21 and older. So, I think it's reasonable to assume the state is going to dedicate a portion of its funds, maybe not by percentage, but a portion, toward these very activities. And I think it would be premature, before we've funded one penny, towards the other two items on the list, to fund anything towards this. And I think it's too soon to know, make a decision on that until we know what the state's going to do with their funds as those funds ramp up. I fully expect that the state will be spending money on these activities, and the county is spending millions of dollars on children's services. Our goal is to spend those dollars effectively as possible and to improve the delivery of those services over time. Allocating this particular funding source towards that activity seems to be sort of ideological more than logic-based. If there is a grant that we can get that's on preventative efforts, and if that grant requires a match, let's entertain the merits of that proposal, not just a budget by percentages.
Other comments? Supervisor Hamburg?
Well, I think those are good points. I do think the state will be allocating money to these purposes. But I also want to say that I agree with Carol Morthorst and her interpretation that this really is about, about mental health. And I don't think it's a very big stretch for the board in the future to consider proposals to educate our youth, to help families with problems around drug abuse, you know, prevention programs and the like, you know, with our cannabis tax money. So, I don't feel like this issue is going to go away. I think there will be some state money, but I think the county may also be called upon in the future to, to fund programs of this type. So, I just, you know, I don't think the issue is done.
No, and I don't see any resistance to funding the types of programs that would be funded through the proposed Future Generations Fund. And when we put forth the advisory measure saying we will spend a minimum of 50% of revenue on these four specific items, you know, frankly, I've always thought the board might easily wind up, at least initially, spending 100%, and that's what we're proposing to do here with this budget. And for all of the reasons stated, I don't see plugging in a percentage for the Future Generations Fund now, but I also don't see any resistance to seriously considering any proposals that come forward in the future. And I absolutely agree, there's a huge component of children's services, including preventative and early intervention that are directly related to mental health, so there's no conflict there either. But I, you know, I think the overall sense of the board is, you know, we appreciate the proposal and the advocacy, and as Chair, or Supervisor Hamburg pointed out, you've done a great job rallying support for the proposal, and it's obviously a very popular item. And as Supervisor Brown says, had it been included in the advisory, it might have improved the overall vote total. So, we will continue this conversation, and it'll be more fruitful when we actually have some money on the table to allocate. So, unless there's any additional comments, I think we've dealt with that issue for today. One more thing I wanted to clarify. The issue came up earlier that the board had directed 128,000, 180,000 for advanced life support services, support in Anderson Valley, Long Valley, and Covelo. And yet, we have 150,000 of net county cost. Well, I think we did allocate 180,000 with the understanding that 150 was county general fund, and there was 30,000 from an existing source. And is that accurate?
Assistant CEO floor, yeah. That's my understanding, and if, for whatever reason, the agency isn't able to utilize the additional 30,000, then we would have to make accommodations. I mean, I think the board direction for the 180,000 was clear. In discussing this with HSSA Director, we were comfortable leaving the general fund amount that we had plugged in at that point, just at 150,000, but still maintaining that board commitment for 180,000.
I just wanted to clarify that. And so, with that, I think the only specific changes we have directed are the issue related to the library for Budget Unit 7112.
Museum.
Oh, museum, I'm sorry. And so, that item, thank you. And then also, our direction regarding- And then also our direction regarding corrective maintenance, which has been well documented. And I think, including those two Board directions, we're probably ready for the recommended motion, unless there's any additional questions or concerns.
I'll move approval of the budget as amended.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those, oh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Brown?
Well, I just have to say, I will be voting for the budget, but I still think we should have moved over to our priority list or additionally-mentioned potential of Children's Trust Fund. So I'm not going to hold this hostage by voting no. I just wanted to speak my piece.
Oh, and I am being reminded, we will close the public hearing. And if we vote and approve this, we will have gotten out within four minutes of when I had earlier predicted. I think I had called it for 2:37. So we will vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Brown. And the priority list was set by the voters, by the advisory measure, and of course, I think children's services is a priority for all of us.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Chair.
And they're going to get some money at some point, I'm pretty sure.
I'm going to hold you to that.
Okay. And, oh, no, no, oh, oh, oh.
Chair McCowen, Mendocino Town Plan. I don't know if there's anyone here.
Yeah, there's two of us on the antipode.
There you go.
Go ahead, Supervisor.
So much for the 2:37.
One of us is trying to get to Arcata tomorrow. Tomorrow is the meeting of the Coastal Commission. We'll probably be on the agenda for the first item after lunch, is what, the latest that I heard. So hopefully, we will get a good hearing, and we will be much closer to wrapping this up tomorrow than we are today.
And we'll look forward to a successful report on your return.
Thank you.
Is that, okay.
Howard?
I see Nash.
We got it, Nash. We got it.
I think we're good, if you're good.
Probably ran all the way over here.
Well, we're going to keep him in shape. So we did have the update from Supervisor Hamburg on the Mendocino Town Plan. Directors' report for Department of Transportation, item number 5C. Anything to add?
Only if there's questions.
Any questions of the Director?
No questions.
None. CEO report?
Two quick things. Thank you, Chair McCowen. On the CEO report, you have the press release that we put out on June 2 regarding cannabis cultivation program updates. This was to clarify the process for people to come in and submit an application to the Ag Department, and then also to pay their application fee to Treasury Tax Collector and really proof of payment. And I can say that all the departments have been working together to clarify the process and the entry into the application process. And additionally, there is a checklist now that the Ag Department utilizes to determine whether there is enough information to accept an application. And then the second attachment to my report is Cannabis Track and Trace Program informational workshops, and a press release went out this morning on this as well. Basically, these are the first four information sessions and trainings around track and trace that you see there. We will be having trainings throughout the county. The first one will be in Fort Bragg, then Booneville, Leightonville, and Ukiah. And we have other trainings coming. So I just wanted to be certain that the Board and the public saw this, and to also let the Board know that a press release did go out on the track and trace workshops this morning. And unless there's any other questions, that is my report for the day, and there is no legislative update today, as we did discuss that yesterday.
Thank you. So.
Supervisors' reports, let's go without them.
Supervisors' reports.
Let's go without them.
We need to get Supervisor Hamburg on the road. And Supervisor Krosky has a graduation and...
Supervisor Krosky, did you have any quick reports, or?
No.
Okay, so without objection, we will defer Supervisors' reports, and we are adjourned.